Get ready. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM and I'll call on Counselor Sentence to read the land acknowledgement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city of Thorold is situated on treaty land. This land is steeped in the rich history of the First Nations such as Ahadwandran, the Hodenashoni, and the Inishunabe, including the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation. There are many First Nations, Métis, and Inuit, people from across Turtle Island that live and work in Niagara today. The city of Thorold stands with all Indigenous people, past and present, in promoting the wise stewardship of the lands on which we live.
Thank you, Counselor Sentence. Are there any declarations of interest? Seeing none, adoption of the agenda. I propose that the agenda be amended to move item 12.5 respecting DQ Road Environmental Assessment Study to immediately after presentation item 9.3. Can I get a mover and a seconder to adopt the agenda as amended? Counselor Longo and Counselor Sentence? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Adoption of the minutes. Can I get a mover and a seconder to adopt the Public Forum Committee meeting minutes from February 25, 2025, and the open and closed minutes of the council meeting on Tuesday, February 25, 2025? I got Counselor DeAngelo and Counselor Decker. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Mayor's Report. On February 26, I attended the Business After Five event put on by the Niagara Board of Trade and Commerce and hosted by Ba Confuso Funeral Home. I presented Kelly and Rick Westlake with a certificate of recognition celebrating their 10th anniversary. It's been 10 years since they took over the business, Ba Confuso Funeral Home. Congratulations and all the best moving forward. On February 27, Counselor Decker, CAO Manous Douraria, and I met with Niagara region physician recruitment specialist Jill Proto to discuss physician recruitment opportunities in Thorold with existing practices. And I'll add to that, that the presentation from the roundtable is going to be made at Regional Council this Thursday, and then I'll make sure that all of our council gets a copy of that presentation. On March 4, CAO Manous Douraria and I met with Axe Buildings CEO Xavier Toby and his team at the Thorold Multimodal Hub at the former Hayes-Dana site. Axe Buildings offers a range of high-quality prefabricated housing solutions that combine affordability with sustainability, another innovative company and an excellent addition to the Thorold Multimodal Hub. Also on March 4, I presented Papa Vince Pizza with a certificate celebrating their 40th anniversary. Joining me were Counselor Sentence and Counselor Dedavidas, who was also representing the downtown BIA, as well as Regional Counselor Whalen. The late Vincenzo, Papa Vince Coppola, and his wife Adelina founded Papa Vince Pizza in 1985. His son Johnny, wife Marsh, and family have been running the pizzeria since 2004. Congratulations on 40 years in business, an amazing achievement. On March 6, I attended the exciting announcement regarding Destiny Copper, a local business located in the Thorold Multimodal Hub. They received 2.5 million in funding from FedDev Ontario, the federal government's economic development program. Making the announcement was Federal Minister Ruby Sehota. Joining her was MP Vance Bataway, MP Chris Biddle, Regional Chair Jim Bradley, Destiny Copper CEO Greg Hanna and his team, as well as many others. Destiny Copper produces a high-quality critical mineral, copper powder, through a very green process. This funding will lead to upwards of 10 new jobs, almost doubling their current workforce at 12. Another great story regarding the Thorold Multimodal Hub. On March 12, I attended the Lunch and Learn presentation hosted by the Niagara Board of Trade and Commerce, featuring MP Vance Bataway, Parliamentary Secretary to the Minister of Transport and Internal Trade, held at Club Belvedere. Vance gave an update on the national supply chain and logistics strategy, the growth of the Niagaraport's Wellin Canal trade corridor, and the success of the Thorold Multimodal Hub, followed by a question and answer period. On March 13, I attended pizza with politicians sponsored by the Brock University Student Union at Brock University. I was joined by local politicians, MPs, MPPs, and mayors. We discussed current political issues at every level of government, as well as student and community issues and concerns in an informal setting. Congratulations go out to the Thorold U13B Henderson's Pharmacy Blackhawks hockey team on winning gold at the recent Elmvale Maple Syrup Country Hockey Tournament. This is the team that participated in our Santa Claus parade and handed out candy canes along with city council. On behalf of city council, I would like to thank all our community partners for the implementation of a very successful St. Patrick's Day weekend strategy involving preparation, communications, and enforcement. This included Brock University, Niagara College, BUSU, bylaw enforcement from the city of Thorold, St. Catharines, and the Niagara region, Niagara regional police services, and Brock University's off-campus patrol, who all worked collaboratively to ensure an early presence in all areas and enforcement when required. It was a great team effort. World Autism Day is observed annually on April 2. The purpose of this day is to raise awareness and promote acceptance of people with autism spectrum disorder. It also presents an opportunity to tear down misconceptions and false notions about disabilities. City council and staff are proud to support this day by wearing blue and having a flag-raising ceremony at city hall. On behalf of city council, congratulations goes out to Thorold residents Gene Demelio Swire, Mel Woodhouse Fred Neal, Anne Mantini Salina, and Tony Vandermaas, who were awarded their King Charles III Coronation Medals this past Saturday. MP Vance Bataway made the presentation of the medals and certificates at a ceremony held at the Wellin Community Center. They were recognized for their exceptional dedication and service to their community. And we'll have some more names from the event that happened in St. Catharines today at the next council meeting. On March 4, a joint media release, a statement from the Regional Chair and Niagara Mayors on the imposition of American tariffs on Canadian goods was issued. This media release can be found on the city website and Facebook page. We remain united in supporting and advocating for our local businesses and workers. Please buy Canadian whenever possible. And that's the end of my mayor's remarks. Presentations. Up first, we have the Thorold Community Activities Group update. I'll call on Megan Gilchrist, Executive Director for the Thorold Community Activities Group, for your update, and you have 10 minutes, Megan, for the presentation. I want to thank you for coming to council this evening.
Thank you. And thank you so much for having us today. It's nice to see all of you, and hopefully we can provide some information and updates from our presentation last year. So I think we have a presentation or some slides available. Fantastic. So I know that many of you already are familiar with the TCAG, either through activities or because you have family members who are involved, or you yourselves were involved with organization. The TCAG has a very strong history in Thorold. We're now in our 43rd year of providing recreation services, and certainly many people who've been in Thorold have been involved with organization over the years. We want to flip to the next slide. And moving on to the next slide, I know that many of you are also familiar with our mission and vision. I just wanted to reiterate our organizational values for anyone who has not been around the organization recently. These were updated two years ago. The TCAG is a place for everyone, and we believe in the following shared values. Every person in our community deserves opportunities for fitness, recreation, and personal growth. We recognize the importance of community involvement to encourage safer and healthier communities. We strive to encourage caring and ethical behavior in our center and in our community. We recognize the link between a healthy environment and a healthy community. We engage in transparent, ethical, and fiscally responsible business practices. And we recognize the contributions of those who came before us and pledge to continue the TCAG's tradition of high-quality recreational, cultural, and educational programming and services for the residents of Thorold. Moving on, just to give a quick strategic plan update, we have been working on the strategic plan since 2023. We're now in the third and final year of the plan, and I think on the next page it will bring up our pillars for our strategic plan. Overall, we have completed approximately 71% of the goals going into this last year. So we're encouraged and hopeful that we will be able to accomplish most of the things that we set out to do back in 2023. And starting in this fiscal year, we will be going into a new cycle of evaluation and planning for a new strategic plan starting in 2026. So moving on a little bit about our people, we have grown this year. We now have 35 permanent staff, 32 seasonal camp counselors, 53 contracted instructors, excuse me, and 59 board event and market volunteers. Over the course of 2024, these individuals supported approximately 15,000 people. So they certainly have seen an increase in the number of people that we have seen in the past few years because of COVID. We certainly feel that we are back to and have exceeded our numbers prior to COVID breaking out. So our next section, we have some information about what we do. We have had some new programs this year. We've had an expansion of our classes, and we've also had some additional community outreach initiatives. On our next slide, we have some stats of how many folks we have seen this year. I'm not going to read them all because that does get a little bit tedious to read all of the numbers, but all of those numbers have increased over 2023. So they have been varying degrees of increase, but across the board, we have had increases in our programs. And to give you a bit of a sense of our community impact, on the next slide, we have had a strong focus in 2024 on our strategic plan in terms of community outreach and impact. So this year, through various grants and community partnerships, we were able to distribute 3,120 pounds of food and toiletries through our community pantry, which is accessible 24/7 year-round. About $10,000 worth of fresh produce was distributed through our pop-up produce community markets and through our community garden, and approximately $8,000 worth of free books and literacy supports were distributed to families in Thorold. On our next page, we have a little bit of an overview of our programs that were new or exciting in 2024. As most of you know, the volleyball courts opened up outside. They were well-used and well-loved mainly by youth participants this past summer. We had a great beach volleyball skills program that ran over the course of the summer and had almost 100 youth move through that program. We had very good feedback from it as well. We also had our new mural that was designed by Tina Schmidt installed, and we have to extend thanks to the Quanus Club, who were the funders for that particular project. We initiated the Dan Pelche Community Leadership Fund, which is going towards youth and adult leadership development in Thorold. There will be a little bit more news coming regarding how that fund will be distributed, but we are hoping that eventually, once it's fully funded, it will not only be available to members of the TCAG, both youth and adults, but also to the community, that there will be a bursary available for community members to access if they wish to undertake leadership training. We implemented several new or expanded life skills programs for children and youth, including many more baking and cooking classes, they're always highly in demand, community garden learning opportunities, as well as a new public speaking course for leaders in training. We also were involved with many community access events, including our second annual community open house, in which we invite other community organizations and nonprofits to come in and share what they do with the residents of Thorold. We partnered with the city on Earth Day and CD Saturday events. We had our pop-up produce markets, the barbecue movie and swim night, which was in partnership with the city library, Seniors 50+ Center, and age-friendly Thorold, partnership with the Knights of Columbus to host the Harvest Fest event that they hold every year in Thorold, as well as the Santa Claus Parade, in which we partnered with the Thorold Firefighters Association to collect food for community care. Now, with all of this growth, we have seen some challenges this year. If we flip to the next slide, you can see some of those numbers. Our membership has increased by approximately 1,000 visits over the last year. Most of that was in the last three months of the year. We had 350 attendance spots that increased over 2023. Our community use by community groups increased by over 250 individuals, and our demand for subsidy increased by 400%. And again, that was mostly in the last three months of the year. Demand for programs has now exceeded our facility capacity. We had been planning on using the arena, as you know. We have replaced some of that planned space with rental at St. John's Church. They've been great to work with and have provided some space for us to offer those programs that we had planned. But of course, a church hall is not a recreation facility, so not all of those programs can transfer to that space. We do have aging infrastructure that is going to require updating or replacement within the decade, including the gym roof, the part of the roof that was not replaced two years ago, some electrical work, floors, and a sinking elevator room floor. So we know that those are things that we will need to work on, and we are currently and actively searching out grant funding for some of those capital projects. In 2024, we also, along with pretty much every other charity in the country, experienced a lot of pressure, particularly at the end of the year. Donations were down for a variety of reasons. We were impacted, like everybody else, by the postal strike that delayed year-end giving, worsening economic conditions, global uncertainty. Those trends have continued into 2025, our first quarter. Certainly, we've noticed those trends as well. And now we're being impacted not only by tariffs making people nervous about donating, but also by the cost of things. We are very concerned about our costs, particularly for essential things like daycare supplies, where we don't have the option of cutting back. We have to keep providing those services. All that being said, we have had a lot of support from the community this past year. On our next slide, you can see some of the grants that we received in 2024. We were beneficiaries of a number of sources of revenue outside of memberships and such. So we're very thankful to have those partnerships in place. We have a number more grants that we will be working through this year as well. And then, of course, we can do any of this without our community partnerships, and on our next slide, you can get a look at those. Most importantly, of course, the city of Thorold, we work very closely with the city. And I would like to extend a special thanks not only to Mayor Ugulini and the councillors, but also to the staff, particularly in recreation, planning, and engineering, who we've been working with very closely this year and have been incredibly supportive and helpful. On the horizon, we have coming up several exciting things happening. We're still growing along with the community. So on the next page, you can see just a quick overview of that. We have been able to receive some funding from the Jays Care Foundation. So we are currently running a youth and sport baseball skills program, which is free to community members. There's no cost for youth to participate. It's not designed to replace league competition or anything like that. It's designed to be an introduction to baseball. So we give kids an eight-week intro, gives them some confidence to go out and try out things, especially if they've not felt comfortable in a sport environment previously. We had excellent feedback from our volleyball skills program, that several of those kids went on to try out for community teams or for school teams. So we're hopeful that that will be similar with baseball this year and that our local baseball leagues will see an influx of kids who feel comfortable taking part in those sports. We are working on expanding and diversifying our revenue as well. Obviously, as we're growing, we need to find new sources of revenue. So along with grants and city funding, we are also looking at some new and exciting events. We're planning a 50-50 raffle that's online this spring. We're hoping to host a June 14 Pancake Run, which is basically your charity run, but with a pancake bar at the end. So there's good carbohydrate motivation to get to the end of the run. And we are working alongside the city and the region to continue with the Allenberg Childcare Expansion Project. We, with the help of city engineers and CoreTech, were able to work the floor plan so that we've actually been able to add a few extra spaces that are desperately needed in the childcare world in Niagara. So we will now be able to host 15 toddlers, 24 preschoolers, and 17 JK SK school-aged children, once that program opens, which we hope will be early 2027. And there's more things on the horizon that we're working on right now, so we're looking forward to being able to share those things with you. We will be providing our audited financials as soon as we receive them. Our AGM is next Wednesday at 7:00 at the TCAG, and of course, you're more than welcome to attend. And if you have any questions at all, please feel free to contact us, and we're happy to have a chat. Thank you so much.
Megan, thank you so much for your presentation, and I'm going to open the floor up to any counselors that have questions for Megan. Go ahead, Counselor Dedavidas.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming in, Megan. Decreased donor giving, what plan do you have in place to increase that?
We actually had already put this plan in place prior to this, but we've just hired a new development coordinator. So she is currently working on developing a donor development plan. So that includes not only individual donors, but also corporate sponsors and also major gifts. So we are working through that, and our focus for 2025 is on diversifying revenue streams.
Oh, great. Maybe leveraging social media also and things like that?
Absolutely, yes. In conjunction with her new position, we're also working on a social media communication plan.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Counselor DeRose, and then I'll go to Counselor Sentence. Go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Megan. Megan, I just wanted to, it's not really a question, I just wanted to compliment you on the great job you're doing there. I know my kids love it, and I'm even enjoying the karate classes. And a big shout-out to Sensei Roberto and John. What a great, great group of people you've got working for you. Thank you. Thanks for all you guys do.
Thank you, and I would like to say that all of the things that we do are only possible because of the people who are involved, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sentence.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. Megan, thanks for coming again. Great group. You've got a great group again. Finally pulled off the 50-50 draw.
Yes.
Years we talked about that. That's great. You're going to make money off of that. I just want to make, people can make donations to the pantry as well. It doesn't have to be financial donations. You can bring in food and stuff like that to put in the pantry, correct?
Absolutely, and we have had a few organizations, such as The Lions, as well as Toolbox Niagara, that have been able to share donations with us. We also host, as you know, collection drives, so we try and work reciprocally with different organizations to, you know, we might as well all share out of the same pot, so.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Is there anyone else? Go ahead, Counselor O'Hair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. Megan, thank you so much for coming in. You and everyone at TCAG do such wonderful work, just such a bonus for our community, so really well done. And I love all the community partnerships you take on. It really is phenomenal to see. I have one question, and that is just an update, perhaps, if you have one. I know that we're seeing that the renovations at Allenberg are a little bit behind due to unforeseen things that get in the way, and I'm just wondering, do you have a target date still of opening a daycare there?
Yes, so we are a little tied to the region's timeline because the funding comes through them from the province. So we have gone back to them and renegotiated our agreement with them. Once we will be able to, as far as I know, adjust that date again slightly, once we have the archaeological assessment report, just to provide them that information. CoreTech has been really good about providing us with sort of a rough timeline of how things will roll out now that we're through that investigation. So our target, as of right now, is 2027, early 2027, but potentially taking possession, not open to children, obviously, but to be able to get in and do some work on the rooms and have them set up so that as soon as the building's ready to go, we can get through there. And it's a lot of ducks to line up because, of course, we have to make sure it's safe for fire and structural and all sorts of things.
All right, okay. Well, we'll keep our fingers crossed. Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor DeAngelo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Megan, for coming, and thanks for all the work you do to make our community better. I just want to touch on a couple items because they sort of pique my interest. One was the baseball program that you're running in the summer. Is that something that you run on-site, or do you use, or do you require the use of municipal facilities at one of our base?
So the Jays Care Foundation, I think you're probably familiar with them, but they give you the option of running indoors or outdoors. So the program that we've selected, it's a two-part program. One is called the RBI Program, which is for any youth from grade four up to high school, and it's just a general skills program. The second program is called Girls at Bat, which is specifically for female identifying children and youth. Both of those programs are running in our gym, so they provide us with indoor baseball equipment so that we can run the drills inside. We are not planning to run it in the summer. We were planning that this would run in the spring and the fall so that the kids have the opportunity to gain the skills going into school season or going into summer. And then that way, we're not running over top of other baseball programs that are running in the community.
Just curious how that, did the Jays Care Foundation provide instructors for that, or just the equipment?
They just provide the equipment. It's about $5,000 worth of in-kind donation with equipment, which is amazing. They do, however, provide a full curriculum for the program, which is basically pick-up and use. So two of our youth instructors who have baseball experience are running the program, but they are provided with a binder that has everything from lesson plans, activity ideas, drill activities, videos. It's a very thorough program, and it is actually available to other community organizations and to schools at no cost. So if there are any other organizations or schools in Thorold that would be interested in participating and have questions, I'd be happy to sort of talk them through it, but it's a very easy process.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. My question is more if you needed more volunteers to help with the program?
Oh, yes.
I know there's some young baseball players that always like to participate and teach younger baseball players how to play.
We absolutely would welcome that. Jays Care very much encourages LITs to be part of the program, so if you have any, please send them our way, and we will happily take them.
I'll touch base offline with you to see how that runs.
Great, thank you.
The other question I had for you, I know you mentioned that your programs are exceeding a facility capacity. Have you been working with the city at all, through you, Mr. Mayor? Have you been working with the city to see if there's any availability to use the Canada Games facility to help facilitate some of the utilization that you can't handle at this point in time?
The challenge we have with the Canada Games Park is the same challenge that a lot of the other community organizations face, like the Elite Track Group and such. The timing when it's available doesn't work well with young people. So oftentimes, when it's not being used by elite organizations or by Brock groups and such, it's too late, or it's during the day when the kids are in school. We do have the option, we did actually pull our volleyball league out of Canada Games Park this year, our adult volleyball league, because the cost became too prohibitive. We weren't able to maintain the amount that we were paying in order to use that facility. So we're back using DSBN properties. We are working with the city to find alternate spaces. We've also applied for a capital grant through Canada Sport and Recreation that's available through the federal and provincial governments for funding for capital projects for recreational facilities. I don't know if we'll get it or not, but that plan would then be that there would be a 10-year timeline to have an expansion put on at the front of the building where our parking lot is. Dan, my predecessor, had actually had some plans drawn up for that circumstance, but again, that's a, you know, seven to 10 years out because a capital campaign requires about that amount of time to be able to put it together.
Just maybe a question through staff. Is there any, because I know we meet with the Canada same Is there any, because I know we meet with the Canada, same Canada Games Summer Park. There's a group and we have staff representation on there. Can we at least have staff try to address that? That there's community needs that are required and that the owners, or I shouldn't say the owners, the managing group have to be a little bit more cognizant that, you know, the city of Thorold pays quite a bit for that building and we need to utilize it more and work with our community groups to come to some sort of conclusion, resolution that benefits them. It can't all be about the athlete, the elite athlete. It has to also provide benefit for the community groups. So I think this is important. And I think, Mr. Mayor, I think the only way of stressing that is through our liaison that sits on that committee.
Yeah, and Jeff sits on it. I can tell you that there's a lot of leagues that play out of there that aren't just the, there's a lot of leagues with kids playing, whether it be volleyball, basketball, whatever. Even on PA days, there's a lot of groups like the River Lions and different organizations that are running kids' camps there on PA days and different days because like you said, it's easy to get time there during those type of hours. So it is being utilized for that.
Yeah.
And believe me, I know because I'm there four times a week. So I see who's there and who's utilizing the facility, so.
Yes, but, Mr. Mayor, it's not helping the Thorold Community Activities Group. It may be helping some other group that is not associated with Thorold, but I'm asking that we try to manage this. We're paying a lot of money for this facility.
And then it will be addressed.
And it's still not being 100% utilized to the benefit of our community. So that's the point I'm trying to make here. I don't want to keep harping on it. It was not a good decision. What I want to harp on is how can we make it better so that we can utilize it? And this is where it takes some push and some shove and it takes our representatives to be doing that for our community groups. Our community groups can't go up there and demand stuff, but we should be in a position to do so. And that's what I'm asking.
And duly noted. And Jeff works on that on a steady basis. Anyone else? Okay, thanks, Megan. I appreciate you coming and thank you for giving us an update. And I do agree with what councillor O'Hare said. One of the big things that I like is the collaboration between various groups in Thorold working together to optimize not only grants but other opportunities. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your time. And thank you again to all of you and also to the staff because we really appreciate the working relationship that we have. And that's what helps us deliver these services to the residents. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Up next, 9-2 Niagara Regional Transit. And I'll call on Carla Stout, General Manager, Jordan Hamilton, Chief of Staff, and Melanie Steele, Associate Director, Reporting and Analysis for the Niagara Regional Transit presentation. Welcome, Carla.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Thank you for the invitation to come before you this evening and give you a bit of an update on what's happening in all things transit. I do have with me Jordan, who is my Chief of Staff at Niagara Transit, and Melanie is joining us from the region's Finance Staff Division. She's an Associate Director in Reporting and Finance. So the reason for our visit was we had a number of questions through the budget process and at the budget workshop in regional council from both Mayor Ugolini and other members of council where they thought it would be beneficial to come to local councils and have a conversation about what is transit doing in your community now and what is transit planning to do in your community in the future. So we've brought a very brief presentation. We're more here as guests to answer questions and/or to take away, you know, anything that we need to bring back to this council. So if we could start the presentation, please. Next slide. So we do have a bit of an agenda. Lightly, we're going to be touching on things like the affordability of transit, reliability and coverage across Niagara and in this community. The interesting relationship between the city of Thorold and the Brock University Student Union and how services are delivered in your community between those two agencies. Next slide. We're going to touch a little bit on our newly created division at Niagara Transit that is wholly dedicated to customer experience. And then we're going to talk about where's transit going. To wrap it all up and to keep the finances to the end of the conversation, we're going to leave Melanie at the end to talk a little bit about the special levy, how it's arrived at and how it affects this council. Next slide. So when we're talking about affordability, next slide, please, Laura. Transit is affordable. So, and it's about to get even more affordable. Right now, in the system that was uploaded, we have two levels of service. And you would have previously been able to tell the difference by the branding on the buses, although that's going to be changing fairly shortly. The regular price for a local transit fare in Niagara right now is $3 for a local trip and $6 for a regional trip. And by a regional trip, I mean that you're crossing a municipal boundary. Discounts obviously are offered on our pass products and on our cash fares for youth and seniors. But this July 1st, we're going to be moving to a single fare. That fare is going to be $3.50 for a flat, single fare pay at the fare box for all trips this year. So that means that although that's a 50 cent per local trip cost increase, that is a $2.50 decrease on inter-municipal fares taken at the fare box for regional trips. And I can announce, because our board just had a vote this evening, that we are going to, with the board's approval tonight, introduce the Transit Benefit Pass. The Transit Benefit Pass is going to be a product that we are introducing at the same time that we raise the single cash fare rate for low-income residents across Niagara, which include those on Ontario Works and the Ontario Disability Support Program. All of that's going to take place on July 1st, 2025. And for perspective, the ability to have a lower-cost pass in Niagara to this date has only been available for folks who are on the ODSP program, which is about 2,000 people in Niagara. The expansion to persons on Ontario Works and those that meet the criteria for low income in Niagara is going to expand this program to 50,000 people in Niagara. So it's a fairly expansive program and we're expecting it not only to generate a lot more ridership because it is actually going to be putting the people on the bus who can now afford it, who desperately need us, but it will also be addressing one of the pillars in the region of Niagara that is quickly identified as a barrier to economics for families across Niagara. Next slide. So in reliability and coverage, next slide, Laura. On-time performance, OTP. So reliable service is generally measured and what we measure matters. On-time performance for the conventional system, or what we call the big bus system, was 83% last year. This is consistent with 2023. We didn't really go up or down. We have generally kept at 83%. And as a benchmark, just so that you understand, the provincial peer average, and by peer average, I mean systems, our size. We're not comparing ourselves to the TTC, is just under 79%. We are taking delivery of new buses and we are hoping that they are going to start being delivered as early as next week, which will mean that we are going to have significantly reduced maintenance and downtime in the fleet with greater uptime improving our OTP overall. Coverage is expected to improve with the implementation of a master plan, subject of course to budget investment by our board approvals and regional council approvals. And we do have enhanced recruitment underway and we are developing a new training center at what was the former Welland operations site for Welland Transit prior to the amalgamation. Next slide. Increasing ridership, this is something, and I really appreciated the former presenter's nuances around need, need, need in the community and that being demonstrated in the amount of people that were accessing programs and services through TCG because that certainly is our experience on transit. Our ridership increases just from 2023 to 2024 in the conventional on the buses has increased 15%. And just to put that into a bit of perspective, I've been working in transit and reporting on transit for over 20 years. If we had an increase of over 3% in ridership on an annual basis, that was a cause for great joy in any of the systems that I worked in previously. So to have these kinds of numbers is really something else. In specialized, we did have a small increase of 3%, which again is a standard, is an industry norm. And the micro-transit, which is the commingled contracted services of on-demand transit and some specialized service across Niagara, stayed at zero. It is at capacity, so we did not see any increase there. Of note, just for Thorold, from 2023 to 2024, Thorold residents who qualify for the inter-municipal specialized transit service, your increase in ridership went from 1,100 trips in 2023 to 2,900 in 2024, which is an increase of 164% just on that one service level alone. Your conventional transit in Thorold actually increased 5% from 2023 to 2024. So that was your contribution to that 50%. Next slide, Laura. So just to recap, because there was a question and there was a miss on my part. Mary Ugolini had asked, I believe it was through the 2023 budget process, to be provided with information at the regional budget workshop level around how BUSU and Niagara College were contributing to transit across Niagara. And it was missed in the last presentation I did for 2025. So we did prepare that and that's one of the reasons we wanted to bring it to you as well. Next slide, Laura. On Thorold, Thorold receives almost 25,000 hours of service. So in that 25,000 hours of service, the city of Thorold pays for 14,647 hours of that. So 58% of the service received in Thorold is actually funded by Thorold taxpayers. The balance is funded through Brock University Student Union. You have some specialized service hours integrated into that along with your conventional service hours. And this is indicative of both the routes that BUSU funds that flow through the city of Thorold and the ones that are provided by the city of Thorold that serve both populations, both students and residents. Next slide. So you are definitely a mix of city and university transit. And you aren't able to see the far there. But your 2025 requisition was just over $2.2 million. Thank you. Was just over $2.2 million for that 14,647 anticipated service hours in 2025. And that is a mix of local service hours that are a portion to the city and a regional assessment portion that Ms. Steele will get into when we get into the finances. But just to put that into contrast to the agencies below, both BUSU and the Niagara College Student Admin Council, between the two of those organizations, they contribute just over $11.5 million in pass revenue to the Niagara Transit annually. Next slide. So customer experience. So we've made a lot of changes in customer experience since we became Niagara Transit. One of the challenges, and I'm going to speak in the former here. When I was the General Manager of the Niagara Falls Transit Services, I represented just the city of Niagara Falls interests and their transit service. I worked with my friends at the former St. Catherine's Transit Commission and the Welland Transit Division. And we worked very hard to try to integrate our services and make those hours of service make sense so that the people who were trying to make those regional trips weren't getting stranded one community to the other because the hours of service weren't jiving, those sorts of things. But one of the things that really fell down from my perspective, and I think we're doing a great job of addressing it, it was the lack of customer service, real-time customer service to transit customers across Niagara. Our transit terminals, we have an open terminal in Welland. We have an open terminal in downtown St. Catherine's. We now have live customer service operators available seven days a week. That was not the case before amalgamation. Before amalgamation, you could call for service, but you would only get a live operator or someone potentially at a terminal on Mondays to Fridays between 8:30 and 4:30. And as you can imagine, in a public service like transit, that is not when the majority of our folks use our service. So our customer experience was no experience for most of our ridership who would be going to and from work or to and from school or, you know, taking our services on weekends or late in the evening. So we are available seven days a week. The Welland and St. Catherine's bus terminals now operate Monday to Saturday and they operate around our service hours. So you no longer get to a terminal off a bus and the terminal is closed. So from 7:00 AM until 11:00 PM, Monday to Saturday and Sunday and holidays, we're open from 10:00 to 6:00. In Niagara Falls, this was my dream. We actually opened a small hub kiosk that provides the same level of pass sales and care and information Monday to Saturday from 7:00 to 7:00. We still don't have an actual terminal in Niagara Falls, but we also open that on Sundays and holidays as well. Specialty services, which is our accessible level of specialized transit, now has support for after-hours service as well, like taking same-day cancellations, talking to our passengers and our riders who have, you know, booked those services about emergencies or having an availability to be available for emergencies on the road. And that is also available on Sundays now from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So we've really expanded the availability to our riding public to talk with us and to talk to us when they need us. Next slide, Laura. Some of the customer experience improvements that you will see and feel in real time in 2025 are our new branding. I don't know that you have seen it yet, but we do have 27 buses coming over the next number of weeks and months. So you will start to see it rolling through the city of Thorold. We're planning for the upgrade of our existing bus stops. Just, you know, so that you understand the scope of that project, we have 1,800 active bus stops in the network now. And you can imagine that they are all in varying degrees of accessibility. They all have varying degrees of amenities and assets on them. So that is going to be a very large project for Niagara Transit to standardize. We're going to be completing a multi-year accessibility plan, which is mandated under the AODA. And we are undergoing an eligibility audit for the folks who are already on the specialized transit system. Security enhancements, I'm sure I don't have to tell anyone here that our world has changed and we are feeling that not only on the buses but at our terminals and at our bus stops. Security enhancements at both the terminals is going to be underway by mid this year. We're going to be expanding customer service to answer inquiries and calls even farther after hours. Detour and service interruption updates are now happening in real time not only on our website, but they're coming to our social networks and on our app. And we have currently engaged a community engagement coordinator and her name is Wendy. She is available to meet with community organizations. I'm sure you have great organizations like the ones we heard the presentation from, but also your seniors advisory committees, your youth, your accessibility advisory committees to the city of Thorold. That is Wendy's position, is to bring back all of that feedback from the cities that we serve and to engage with those groups. Next slide. So where is transit going? So Niagara Transit's first master plan is going to be presented in its recommended form to our Board of Directors, of which councillor Longo sits as a board member, at our April meeting. So next month, we are going to be looking at the first iteration of a recommended master plan for discussion, for approval at the board and then approval at regional council. We had so many pop-up public sessions across Niagara associated with this plan. We had so many pop-up public sessions across Niagara associated with this plan. We didn't even know where half the staff was half the time. They were in rooms everywhere with placards and boards. We ran a survey, I believe we elipsed 1,000 responses just late last week. I think it closed on the 28th of February, and we had in excess of 1,000 responses, so we were really pleased with that. That plan is finalizing. The Transit Board will see it in April. And then, once the plan is finalized, we're not only going to be sharing that with Regional Council as the body that would have to approve it, but also, you know, potentially fund some of the recommendations out of it, but also, we're going to be coming back to local councils. Because it's really important that local councils are engaged and understand how transit and the landscape of transit is going to change in your communities as we go forward with this plan. Next slide. So this is just a little bit of a sample of what we put in front of the public. In front of the public during the engagement process was four options. And not only four options of what you see here, these are four options of looking at what does the intermunicipal, or what do those regional routes look like in the future? But next slide. It also speaks to what are the four options that are required to meet the need of transit over the next 10 years in a phased-in approach of local transit routes? So if you're looking at, if we look at the bottom right-hand corner and we're looking at the middle section, which would, you know, capture St. Catherine's and the city of Thorold, what you're seeing is a lot more service anticipated in that option for south of what I would consider the 406, or south of the municipal boundary for the city of St. Catherine's. And why that's relevant and why you see it in pretty much most of these options, save and except the very, very light option of not doing much to the existing network in number one, is that we are very cognizant and very aware of the amount of growth that the city of Thorold has undergone and what is planned in your immediate five-to-10-year window. Next slide. So I am going to quit talking, and I am going to turn this over to Ms. Steele, and she is going to run you through the paces on the special levy, and I'll let you go.
Thank you, Carla, and thank you so much, councilors, for having us here this evening. So my role here tonight is to walk you through a little bit of how this all wraps up into the numbers. I know at the end of the day, that's a big concern, and both yourselves and your residents might want to understand what they're seeing on their tax bills. So that's my job. You heard a lot this evening from Carla about transit services and how it's being delivered in 2025, so we want to wrap that all up for you with the finances. Next slide, please. So this is just a very, very high-level summary of the percentage increase and the total budget for the Niagara Transit Commission. So we have a gross budget of $87.5 million, and so that means a net budget, or what we need to collect after we factor in all the fare revenues and any other sources of funding, of $62.7 million. So $62.7 million is what the Niagara Transit Commission needs to run the operation that you just heard about. And that corresponds to an increase of 5.76% after the average regional assessment growth for 2025. And so if we look at the details of how that breaks down a little bit, so you can understand where the investment is going, the 2025 budget was focused on delivering core service. And for transit, that meant staying committed to our multi-year capital sustainment strategy, which was approved through the triple-majority approval process that happened in 2022. So at that time, there was a strategy that, over three years, we would get our investment in capital up to a sustainable level to support the asset infrastructure. And as you can appreciate, there's facilities and buses, and there was an aging asset base that was inherited by the Transit Commission on amalgamation. So this year, through this budget, there has been a significant investment in moving us forward on that capital sustainment strategy. That 3.71% you see there represents about $2.2 million in increase-based funding that we can use to sustain those assets going forward. And you might be familiar with asset management planning, or how you guys are doing that at the council here. The Niagara Transit Commission, along with the region, has a robust asset management plan in 2024. They did look at that very recently, and this investment corresponds with what was required in that asset management plan. So we are excited to be making some progress there on being able to sustain the asset needs of the program. Outside of the investment in capital, the base service budget increase was driven mainly by inflationary factors, which were offset by that increased fare revenue that you heard mentioned today through some of the ridership. So we did factor all of that into the budget that was put forward in 2025, but there still is some base pressures for labor, service contracts, and things of those nature, which was the 3.67%. It really is the inflationary and those base service pressures. Carla talked a lot about some great things they're doing within their program. They are really navigating that with the resources that they have. There was no real change to service level through additional investment in the budget. This really is an inflationary or core-service-type-based budget that's in front of you in 2025. Next slide. So how does that translate to Thorold or the residents here? The triple-majority process that established the Niagara Transit Commission in 2022 did outline a methodology for how costs would be allocated or apportioned to all 12 of the local area municipalities. So once the Niagara Transit budget is established, so that $62.7 million is set, what we really do is we look to allocate it to all 12 municipalities, mainly on two factors. And that is region-wide assessment for a component of it, as well as service hours, which you saw a little bit of earlier in the slide, and I'll bring back in the subsequent slide. Those are the two biggest pieces of this methodology on how we share the cost across all 12 municipalities. If we look at number two, which is that regional component, this really was inherited from the amalgamation. So what we do is we look at the regional transit costs that we had in 2022, and we inflate that annually for an inflation factor. But then we allocate that in the same way it was allocated pre-amalgamation. It just looks at the regional assessment, and all municipalities are sharing in their share of that regional assessment. I mean, that was deliberate in that original methodology to try to maintain some consistency with the pre-amalgamation organizations and the post-amalgamation organizations. Number three is really a transitional item, and 2025 actually is the last year that we're dealing with the direct revenue shortfall that was inherited on amalgamation. So this really represents a funding strategy from the previous conventional transit providers. There was a three-year strategy to wean themselves off of the unsustainable funding that was supporting those organizations. And 2025 is the last year of that, so we are excited that this piece will be going away in 2026. But it really was just trying to more gradually acknowledge the transit three years to make sure that all the other municipalities outside of the three conventional ones weren't seeing significant increases all in one year. So this is the last year of that, but it does exist. But the remaining budget, which is the majority of the budget, and you'll see that in the next slide, is allocated based on those service hours. So Carla talked earlier about just over 14,000 service hours for the city of Thorold. That is the basis by which we're allocating the majority of the budget to the Thorold municipality, and then in turn to the Thorold residents. Thorold didn't have any service hour changes from 2024 to 2025. And if you recall, when that slide was up a few minutes ago, Thorold's service hours represent 3.2% of the overall service hours of the Transit Commission's operations for 2025. Next slide, please. So if we understand a little bit about how that methodology works and the total budget, basically what the region does is determines the amount apportioned to each of the municipalities, which for Thorold was just over $2 million. And then we determine a special tax rate, and we provide that to Thorold's Finance Division, and they apply that to the tax bills to each of your residents. So the local area municipalities, through that taxation process, will collect on the tax bill a transit-specific special levy. This is a separate line on all of the tax bills that the residents see, and then they will remit that to the region annually. They do it through four installments throughout the year. This is very similar to the mechanism used for waste management that's been in place for over 20 years, as well as the general levy. But I think of note is that this item is separated and dealt with separately on the tax bill, so your residents can see that distinctly when they're looking at how transit works in the overall taxation process. So next slide. So finally, we just wanted to show you, in percentage-wise, compared to the other municipalities across the system, how that amount apportioned to Thorold changed year over year. So you will see that $2.2 million is the 2025 apportionment to the city of Thorold. That's an increase of just over $200,000. If you look at percentage-wise, what that changed, it was a 10.1% increase. But we always like to look at it after assessment growth, because that's what really translates to what people are seeing on their tax bill. So Thorold was very fortunate with their growth. There's lots of growth going here, so there's a 4.9% growth rate in Thorold for 2025. So the net impact to a resident in Thorold is going to look more like 5.2%. So again, this is averaging. Any particular resident or household could see a little bit more, a little bit less, based on how their assessment is moving. But if you just want to think about it simplistically, if everyone's assessment stayed the same year over year, they could expect to see a 5.2% increase in transit for the 2025 taxation process. I think with that, that was all I wanted to share on the finances for the group. I think that was our last slide, Laura. I think we're just on questions.
Okay. Thank you so much. And now I'm going to open the floor up for questions from council. So go ahead, Counselor Detervius.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I had one question. You said you're adding 27 new buses. Are you eliminating buses? Is it in with the new and out with the old? Are we getting ahead of this?
So through the mayor, thank you for that question. Yes. So essentially, what should be understood by this council and all of the councils that we serve, we came in to amalgamation with fairly significant provincial and federal dollars through the ISIP program, which is Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program. We had ISIP dollars that were dedicated to transit that were uploaded from the region, from the cities of Niagara Falls, St. Catherine's, and Welland, and a few small communities that, you know, had reported ridership, including the city of Thorold, that may not have their own transit, but they certainly had their own ridership, and they were receiving dollars like gas tax, that sort of thing. 27 buses is replacement. None of those buses represent growth. In fact, none of the ISIP dollars that we have currently, and we have about another five to seven years to spend the ISIP dollars that we have in the bank, represent growth buses. We have a little bit of money coming forward from development charges at the regional level to address some of our growth, but consistently, year over year, you're going to be watching a replacement program.
Okay. I had one more question. What plans are in place to improve transit connection between Thorold and key destinations like Brock University and Penn Center? A lot of people in Thorold South, they're always complaining they can't get a bus. They want to go to the Penn Center more. There's hardly any buses around there, and a lot of students are complaining. Are you addressing this?
Through the mayor. And a lot of that is going to be addressed through the master plan. The master plan is a 10-year plan with a 20-year horizon. It's not going to happen the next day. It might not even happen in the next budget year. But the idea is to create a phased-in plan where the areas of growth, and we know Thorold is growing the fastest, that's demonstrated in what we've shown you here this evening, is to address that growth through the master plan in not only just the local service, but making connections that you don't have now. Believe it or not, not everybody wants to get to the Penn Center. You have residents that contact us consistently, new residents, I'll say, asking how they get to Niagara Falls. They do not understand why they can't just get down the 20. You know, those are the questions that we're dealing with at the master planning level to make sure that we're not only just addressing the local service needs inside your community, but also connecting you across Niagara.
My last question, is there any money from the federal government to help out with this? Because a lot of it's population growth that's thrown into us from the government. Are they going to help us with this at all, with the transit?
So from a capital perspective, through the mayor, we recently, just in the last few months, had an announcement. We are going to be receiving over the next 10 years just in excess of $35 million from the Canada Permanent Transit Fund, which is, obviously, that is federal dollars. That is a portion of a dollar, of course. You know, funding always comes with the expectation that cities or regions, municipalities, put their own skin in the game. So there's an opportunity that that's going to, you know, be impacting our budgets as well. But that's $35 million that I didn't have the week before. So that's certainly, to your first question about, are we going to be growing? Are we going to be buying more buses? Are we going to be growing service? We would be actualizing those dollars instead of the dollars that were uploaded to do that work.
Okay, and thank you very much for coming in tonight.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Counselor Sennett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Thank you very much, all three of you, for coming tonight and presenting. We've been looking forward to this. Couple things, I'd really like to see that you're looking at things that may be overlooked, like covers for stops where people aren't getting soaked or snowed. I'd really like to see that in there. A lot of people complain about that part, so that's good to see. Could you explain specialty services just a little bit for me? Does specialty services include the individual pickups for people who need it? Do they, are they the, you know, Thorold South bus that's a van? Is that considered specialty? Can you just tell me what specialty services is, if you don't mind?
Sure. Through the mayor to council, this is a little bit of inheritance. So as you can imagine, when we uploaded, we had three conventional bus providers, right? We had St. Catherine's, Welland, Niagara Falls. There was a myriad of contracts across Niagara, whether that was van services, it could be arrangements with taxi companies. It was a bowl. There was a bowl of spaghetti. And so specialty services really is the coordination of all of those contracts into one thing. So that is accessible transit for persons with disabilities or are seniors, frail seniors, people who can't use a regular bus, as well as the more rural areas and far-flung areas that don't have a bus going out to their neighborhood and likely aren't going to see a bus for some time until there's, you know, there's some density there that would support a fixed route. So that's specialty. The interesting part about our specialty services, we used to have different things. You had one service that picked up persons with disabilities, but you had another service that picked up folks who lived rurally or didn't have access to a fixed route. Those things were co-mingled in 2024. We co-mingled those services to take advantage of open seats on each one of those services to make sure that we could find efficiencies. When we co-mingled all of those services together, originally, all of those services represented about $9 million per annum to pay for all of those services by all the municipalities that uploaded those costs to us. When we re-RFP'd that service as a co-mingled system, delivering all of those specialty services, we were able to actually get that down to just over $7 million. So this is kind of what the promise, I think, was to municipalities when they were talking about amalgamating transit, was that there were going to be efficiencies to be had. I can tell you, coming into the 2025-year budget process, we're out of efficiencies. I think we've carved everything off this bone that we possibly can, and now we're looking ahead in the master plan.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just one more question. So I think that's what we're looking for, is something Port Robinson, Rolling Meadows, towards Welland. I think what I'm hearing in your 10-year plan, you're looking at all these things and implementing them. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Counselor O'Hair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the presenters. Thank you so much for coming and providing us with this information. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, I sit on the age-friendly committee, and I see in your presentation that you're taking away the senior discount. And as you know, there's a lot of... No? Because I read that.
No.
So seniors at present pay $5 for a regional trip in July? How much will they pay?
So through the mayor, they'll be paying $3.50.
For regional trips?
For any trip in Niagara. And further to that point, all of the passes, the pass products that we currently offer, both to youth and seniors, are also going down. So there's an ability in raising the cash fare to, you know, put the burden of the affordability of the system on the people who can afford it, but to also reduce the pass costs, like the transit benefit pass for persons with low income, that new 50,000 folks in Niagara that we're going to be serving, but also our senior that we're going to be serving, but also our seniors and our youth. The pass products are actually going to go down in cost. So I'm glad you asked that question.
Okay, no, that's wonderful news. Thank you so much.
I'll double-check that presentation to make sure it wasn't misleading, because perhaps it was, so.
Okay.
If it was my writing, I apologize.
Thank you, that's great news. Another question I have is, what plan does Niagara Region Transit have? Plan or targets in implementing goals to reduce the pollution? And I'm a supporter of transit, but obviously, through the number of vehicles on the roads, we do have to be aware of the pollution that is added on a daily basis. So what are the goals that Niagara Region Transit has to reduce this? Are you looking at other vehicles? Are you looking at better systems?
Sure, and thanks for the question, because I get to brag a little bit, and through the mayor to you, council. Coming into amalgamation, the St. Catharines Transit Commission had started exploring the idea of going to battery electric bus. I know in Niagara Falls, I had a feasibility study done about transferring my fleet over to hydrogen fuel cell. And so we brought all of that good work in-house together. Within the last year, we have started the Fleet Electrification Strategy Study. We are already going into Phase 3 of that study. We'll be presenting that. This is a fully funded ISIP program, again, with dollars that came to us from the provincial and federal governments. The pilot associated potentially with getting further federal funding to make the capital purchases for the buses that would be required, that sort of thing, if that becomes a reality, and this is where we can possibly use some of the CPTF, that $35 million, the pilot that we're looking at right now is to put 17 battery electric buses on the road and pilot that over a period of two to three years to understand exactly incrementally what the savings would be to completely change out the fleet. I'm a believer in transit too, obviously, so I think any bus is better than 50 cars on the road having 50 people in a bus. But we know with, even with clean diesel, we can do better. So we are going to be having that strategy coming forward to the board. Councillor Longo will be able to share that with you, I'm sure. And the horizon on that really is going to depend on funding, but we're very excited by potentially the expansion of the Zero Emissions Transit Fund at the federal level. And we are already applying for further CPTF funding to take a look at funding that pilot.
Fantastic, wonderful. Look forward to that. My last question is just a logistical one. Where do the transit vehicles come from? Where are they being manufactured?
How timely. So through the mayor, and I just answered this question at our Board of Directors meeting. The Chair Bradley was asking and, you know, making comments about things like tariffs and what that could possibly do, but really to the cost of what could be a million to a million and a half dollar bus. And that's what buses cost these days. I am happy to report, we purchase through a joint procurement with about 24 to 27 agencies across Ontario. Metrolinks, which is the largest transit agency in Ontario, manages that procurement project for us. Our buses are Canadian-made in Winnipeg by New Flyer, and our former buses, which we will still be buying parts for, were made in Quebec by Nova Bus. So both of our manufacturers in our fleet, and we are going to have to consider ourselves a two-fleet vehicle system because we've had a change in procurement. Both of them are Canadian.
Wonderful, thank you very much. That's three out of three, that's a home run.
Anyone else have questions? Go ahead, councillor Deange.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. The slide deck, do we have copies of that?
I believe it was on the agenda. I'll look to the clerk.
No, it wasn't on our agenda, that's why.
Okay, it may have come a little late, so, but I defer to the clerk.
It can be circulated.
I know, but if, when we have presentations, I think it's very important that they get to us, like, we get our packages on Thursdays, presentation should be there so that we can go through it and ask questions. I have several questions, but I don't have the slides in front of me to write the questions down. So it makes it a little bit more difficult, me doing my job. So in future, if we can make sure that the presentations, or at least give us a hard copy, like the Thorold Community Activities Group at least gave us a hard copy of their presentation, so it's easier to follow. It's a little difficult not being able to follow it 100%. So anyways, if we could get a copy of that, that would be great. But I do have a couple of questions, and that's why I can't really reference the page numbers very efficiently here. But you talked about the program for the ODSP and OW low income. Can you maybe expand a little bit on that? I work for an organization, and we buy bus tickets, and that's who we supply to our clients. Is that, will that organization be available to buy those bus tickets to supply to their clients? How's that going to work? And if you don't have the details, is there a contact person I can contact that I, to run the program, so I can get some further information on that?
Certainly, through the mayor. So the Ontario Works and Ontario Disability Support Program, they're already managed by the Social Assistance Office at the region, so both of those programs. We are sharing services, and we'll be sharing staff to administrate this program with the region of Niagara, which means we didn't have to hire any staff members to roll this out and to get this going in the community. With regards to the trip tickets that you're talking about that are available to agencies, those are always available just by calling the customer experience team, and they would be available for agencies.
I know, but they are quite costly, and that's the point I'm trying to make, because the clients we service are those that have low income. So you're giving it to the OW and the ODSP.
Yes.
But you're not helping the organizations, because that means we have to take funds from somewhere to pay for those tickets. Like, I'm purchasing $5,000 to $10,000 worth of bus tickets a year, and that's a pretty substantial amount that my organization that I work for has to output to help their clients. So that's where I'm looking at, if there's someone I could talk to about that, to get a better understanding, if we could fit into that program to help us facilitate that.
Yeah, so I'll connect with you, councillor, and we can, I can get you the details and about all.
That'd be awesome, that'd be awesome. That was question one. Question two was, I know you talked about upgrading bus drop-off spots. Will the priority be on accessibility or the bus shelters? Because I do see buses stopping, and then they stop, and there's a curb there where the resident gets out of the bus and then has to sometimes, not trip over the curb, but go over the curb to get onto the sidewalk. Is that going to be the priority as opposed to the shelters? I think shelters are nice, but accessibility, to me, is more important to reduce the risk of someone getting injured, especially during winter time. It is, so, my question to you is, is that going to be the focus when you're going through your plan to look at the accessibility and eligibility audits? Is that, if I have the correct terminology?
Yes.
Could you just comment on that? Thank you.
Certainly, and through the mayor to you, councillor. Part of the work of doing a great job of making sure that all of those 1,800 bus stops, number one, are relevant, right? Because we do have some that are just, they're not, is to develop what we've developed in the first part of this program, which is a design standard. So we've had the design standard established. It will accommodate 40-foot buses, 60-foot buses, drop-off from smaller vehicles if we're looking at specialty services vehicles. But the design standard is AODA compliant, so it has a proper pad. It would have a proper structure. If the fare box tells us that enough people are using that stop, that it requires a structure. Or what type of riders use that stop? You know, some of the information that we get off the bus from the fare box or from the bus itself is whether a ramp is deployed, usually at a particular stop, then we know a person with a wheelchair is a regular user there. And that informs our decision-making around accessibility as well, and priority in making sure that stops are accessible in the network where people need them the most. Overarchingly, the 1,800 stops have a number of things that have to happen outside of accessibility, safety, lighting, you know, there's a lot of priorities where people meet us. With shelters, shelters used to be owned, and I'm sure you have a few of them that still say Patterson on them, or you've seen them in other communities. Effective March 1st this year, we assumed ownership of all of those shelters. We have 300 in the system. We have a one-year obligation to use some of those ISIP dollars to replace 100 of them in the first year. So you're going to start seeing those new shelters. Where we can repurpose shelters, we're going to do that, and we're going to make sure that we have more shelters out on the road. That is the number-one complaint, by the way, that we get on the phone every day, is about whether and about there not being a shelter at a bus stop. So we're very aware that that is a customer concern, but we also don't want to put a shelter on something that isn't appropriate for everyone to use.
Thank you. Next question I have here is, I know it was mentioned that Thorold's growing, and we're looking at, you know, potentially getting some more service in our community. Do you look at size of vehicles when you're servicing the community? I know in the past, when Thorold ran buses out to Thorold South, it was a smaller type bus that connected to the city center. Is that something that's going to be looked at the master plan in terms of size? Because there'll be some demand, but it won't be potentially a huge bus demand, but a smaller one. But if you want to provide that service that interconnects, I think that's critical. Is that something that's going to be addressed during the master plan, looking at the development that's occurring?
So through the mayor to council, so what you're talking about is rightsizing the tool for the job, right? And that's absolutely part of this process. We are looking at smaller communities or outcrops of communities like yours, where you might be half a bus ready, you know, to fill. And the idea here is that, you know, you start with fully accessible vehicles that are right-sized, right, to the route, with the idea that it is always preferable to grow to that 40-foot bus, because you want to fill them. But if you're not going to fill a 40-foot bus, I don't want to hear any more complaints about empty buses rolling around than you do. So we are going to be looking at potentially utilizing things that are of a size like an accessible 26-foot van, like you would see on paratransit right now. You know, the best way to get people on board is to make sure that everybody can use it, so it has to be fully accessible, and to make sure that, you know, you're not putting something in a community that is brand-new to transit that instantly makes them hate transit, and that is big, loud, noisy buses.
Just, through you, Ms. Mayor, just a further one on that. Again, with Thorold growing in population, but also in area, are you looking at some of the new area in terms of developing bus stops in advance of the area? Because it doesn't make a lot of sense to build the area up and then go back and then put the accessibility in, put a bus shelter in.
Yeah.
Because the developer, and some of that can be done through development charges. Is that something that's going to be done through the master plan? And it's pretty relevant to Thorold, because we're the, one of the fastest-growing ones cities in Niagara.
Yeah, so through the mayor, one of the things we've done is engage with the Niagara Home Builders Association, just to sort of get out in front of some of these developments, not as a check like you have to go through in the planning process, but to be a resource to discuss if this is a community that you feel will need transit or will benefit from transit down the road, then we'll be sort of at the table in the planning process, just for things like the ability to turn a bus around and that make transit possible to a community. There's a lot of little things like that that can be big challenges after the fact. They're much easier to deal with ahead of or during the planning process. So we have engaged with them, we definitely have more work to do on that front, but more on that will be coming, we're going to keep working with them.
Okay, just elaborate on that. So the instance of Rolling Meadows, so you, I know that there's a Niagara Builders Association, but then there's also developers that own land in that particular area, and it's not one developer, there's several developers that own land. So I think it's critical that you work with each of those as they come together, as the whole site plan becomes apparent, but I think that's very critical.
Just a quick comment on that through you, Mr. Mayor, and it would, and this is just a general statement to your staff, you know, we're going to be reaching out through the planning process after the master plan is baked and brought to you, you know, for your information. With all of the planning departments across the municipalities, nobody knows your city better than you do, and I wouldn't pretend to. So it really does behoove your planning departments and your city planners to work with transit to make sure that developers are out in front of that. When I worked in one particular municipality, I worked with the city planner. There was nothing that went through, you know, the second site plan process without consideration for where are we pouring the transit pads? Who's paying for the shelters? You know, can you turn a 60-foot bus around in this area if it's a highly dense or an intensified area? And that's really the stopgap. That's where to start that conversation, is to involve transit at that level with your own planners on staff as well.
Yeah, no, that's excellent. Then the final question, I just want a little bit more clarity on the last slide, or one of the last ones that you put up there with Thorold's apportionment and percentage increase. If you could maybe put that slide up, it was one of the last ones that had the chart, 25 versus 24 requisition by municipality. Yeah, it was almost one of the last ones.
Right there.
Yeah. Maybe if you could re-explain, I'm sort of having a little difficulty grasping that the percentage change was 10.1% for Thorold. Our service hours didn't really change, so it would be the regional component that changed and made it higher, but usually if you have more assessment, that should drive down the cost. So I'm a little perplexed why it's higher than lower, because, and I'm going to, to me, this is what we've done when we had the hospital, an apportionment for assessment, when they built a new hospital, we gave a donation to them, and then that was paid over the next 25 years, roughly. And then as assessment increased, that percentage of what was on a person's tax goes down. This is the opposite, it's actually adding to their tax bill with the added assessment. Maybe if you could elaborate, and maybe correct me if I'm reading this wrong, but it seems to be the opposite of what I think would happen.
I think, through the mayor, I think I understand what you're saying, and it really does come into the, a bit of the complexity of the special levy methodology. So on one of the previous slides, I talked about three components to how we figure out that 2.2 million and compare it to the 2 million from last year. The methodology or the concepts you're explaining make sense on that regional component and the, but as I was explaining, there is a three-year legacy piece with that direct piece coming off of the city of St. Catharines, Niagara Falls, and Welland, that is making this a little bit more complex to understand the final numbers you're seeing here. So if we eliminate, we did do this analysis because regional council had some similar questions, if we were to eliminate that direct piece, this is the last year we're dealing with that, you know, any municipality would have expected to see approximately a 14% increase outside of those three big players that came from the original system. So anything less than 14%, so here we're starting at 10, before assessment growth, is actually meaning that your proportion of the service or your proportion of what you're getting in the current framework is a little bit less than what it was last year. So the methodology is complex, particularly in the first three years when we're dealing with the offboarding of that direct piece, which will be gone next year. And then I think the numbers would make sense on aggregate in the way that you're thinking about it going forward. But until we kind of deal with the amalgamation and how we get everybody on the same playing field with just the service hours and just the regional assessment, you do see some different interplay between the municipalities, and that was intentional in the way that it was designed on amalgamation. I'm not sure if that's answering your question.
Well, it does answer my question. It just seems like the cost of the big three are pushing it to the other municipalities. That's what it seems to be breaking down to. So we're, Thorold's, because of its growth, Thorold's subsidizing St. Catharines, Niagara Falls, and Welland's transit system because of the growth. If we didn't have the growth, then we wouldn't be subsidizing it. So growth is sort of hurting us at this point in time. But you're saying next year, that equalization's going to be coming off?
That's correct. Next year, we should no longer have that equalization. We'll probably still see a little bit of interplay, because as it comes off, but then it should be free and clear, it should be as intended with service hours driving the majority of the allocation, and there'll still be a small component that makes up the regional assessment component. So just to give you some context, on that 2.2 million dollars you're seeing, the regional assessment component of that for Thorold is about $800,000. The majority of that is coming from the service hours. And that $800,000 that makes up the regional component should stay fairly static based on the way the methodology... And that eight hundred thousand dollars that makes up the regional component should stay fairly static based on the way the methodology. So it really will move to a service hour based methodology, which was intended. We just kind of need to get ourselves through the initial implementation, which was a three-year plan.
Okay, so I think I'm starting to understand it now. So you're saying basically that eight hundred thousand is not going to go, be eliminated, like eight hundred thousand for us, but that pot will be eliminated and it will be strictly service hours that will drive the cost of the transit for each of the municipalities?
Yes, the majority of the allocation will be based on the service hours. And there'll still be a small regional component, but it will be very consistent. Because the methodology on that was always intended to just inherit the history and just keep it consistent. It's just this direct piece, the three-year plan, that we had to get the three municipalities off of that piece and into the larger system that you're feeling some of the shifts in Thorold from.
Yes, okay, so we agree on that, that we're feeling the shift. Thank you.
Counselor DeRoez had his hand up. Go ahead, Counselor DeRoez.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you guys for coming down and speaking. I just, I had a quick question, couple for Melanie. Or Melanie, just I want to go back to keep that screen up that Counselor D'Angelo asked because I wanted to ask you about the final change net of assessment growth at five point two percent. And I thought, I heard you say that that's the amount of increases we could expect over the next several years. Is that correct?
So through the mayor, not over the next several years. That is the 2025 impact. So this is just our 2025 budget. And so the best way I can simplify it, if I can kind of state it again, is if all else was equal in the system and residents didn't see changes in their assessment just through, you know, the normal impact, you know, processes and that growth of four point nine in Thorold is applied consistently, an average taxpayer can expect to see their transit line go up five point two percent in 2025. That is just the 2025 number.
Thanks for that explanation. My concern is that we can't expect to consistently have growth as time evolves. And I'm just wondering, like, why wouldn't you just try to get your spending down? You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Like, this is my biggest concern for transit, one of my biggest concerns, and I get this from residents all the time. It's just, there has to be some frugality in decisions and it doesn't seem like there is. So is this what we're expecting then in Thorold? And this is only if we have a four point nine percent increase in assessment growth. So we're going to get hit at least over five percent in property tax going to transit. Is that correct?
Through the mayor to you, counselor. So I think it's important to remember a previous slide from Melanie's portion where we talked about what made up the increase from 2024 to 2025. Laura, it's a few slides back. I think it's one of her first. There we go. So what you're actually seeing is the increase, which if you, if you, I guess, averaged the assessment growth to one point six two percent for all municipalities that participate, the total was five point seven six percent. That was the budget amount that was passed by the board and passed by Regional Council. But if you look above that total line, counselor, you can see that the base service increase was three point six seven percent. That three point six seven percent is the base service on your service hours, right? So the service hours that the city of Thorold had, which stayed the same. That includes things like inflation. That includes things like having to pay people what we agreed to pay people in a collective bargaining agreement. That's three point six seven percent. The piece underneath that is three point seven one percent. It's the bigger portion of the budget. And what that is, is when we amalgamated, we amalgamated with no money in the bank. We had no capital reserves for transit whatsoever. We had ISAP dollars that had been preordained towards the projects that had been applied for in 2019. But we had no money to hold up the assets that we inherited or replace the assets that we were going to need to replace in good time. So the enhanced capital financing piece is really what I think you're talking about with when are you going to, when are you going to start, you know, seeing those, those costs come down? The costs are going to go down when I have six point five million dollars year over year in my operating capital transfer to make sure that I can replace buses and fix buildings when I need to, put up shelters, pour bus pads, potentially fund things like, you know, green initiatives or green vehicles. And that six point five million is almost realized. We are one more budget year away from an operating transfer that would realize that six point five million every year in the operating transfer. So really, when we get there, when that operating transfer realizes that six point five million dollar investment each year by all of the local municipalities participating, then we just get down to what does the base service cost? And the base service is the operating hours, the local service hours. And really, that is going to be the conversation that we're having at the board level and at Regional Council about where do we grow the service and how much investment does the community want to make in transit going forward? Much like Melanie, you know, spoke about that first three years trying to get us off the direct municipality or the direct transfer costs. I'm in the same boat with trying to put money in the bank so that I can buy buses. And that should be over by the time I get to that six point five million. And then we're going to be talking about growth from a service hour perspective, which I think is what this council is interested in because what I've heard consistently from most counselors this evening is we want more service. So when you want more service, that is going to be on the base service line, which is coming, you know, over year, over year, over year. But it's not going to include this big, huge, above capital transfer every year. I hope that's helpful.
Counselor.
Yeah, no, no, that helps explain it, but it still doesn't give relief to taxpayers going down the road. I know you said it's going to be, is it one more year of this enhanced capital financing where you're caught up? Two more years or do you have an idea?
This is the last year. This year, 2025 is the last year.
I just, you know, I, I'm just concerned just because, you know, we get a letter today from a local business talking about how, and here, I'll take a quote from what they wrote. Some of you think it's okay to run budgets with five percent plus increases. If they're a one, were a one-time thing, it would work. But you whittle away the livelihood of brick and mortar businesses year after year. I would, I would refer to them as under attack. So this person wrote like a five-page letter about what's happening in all the, in all the levels of government. And it's apparent now because of the tariff situation going on and everybody's panicking. So I just, I just want to put a request into transit. Try to be frugal in your daily operations when you're doing your budget. Because we could only take taxpayers, residential taxpayers can only take so much increases over the years. My second thing I just wanted to bring to your attention, I do see many rural buses empty. And as Counselor D'Angelo was saying, or I think it was him that talked about how we can maybe get us something more efficient instead of a large bus that rides from Thorold to Wellen to empty or to Fawn Hill or wherever it's driving to. And my last thing I want to talk, you're talking about going into the future with electrification of vehicles. And my concern there is you, you guys need to call up the city of Edmonton and talk about how their sixty electric buses, sixteen out of sixty on a given day work. And then they have to go in for getting fixed up. So just, I'd be very cautious in that. I know we'll discuss that down the road, but, but I'm very concerned about that. But thank, thank you guys for coming in. And if, just if you can somehow, you know, I'm looking at the water rate increase tonight, eighteen percent for Thorold sewer increase, ten point seven increase. Eventually, we've got to reach a point where we have to start going with things that we need, not that we want. And I'll end with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Longo.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Carla. Carla, thanks for coming in tonight. I really appreciate you educating and informing council. I think there were a lot of good questions here tonight. You just mentioned at the end there talking about expectations and growth. And I think that's what I just want to end my question on. I think council needs to be aware of where we need to go with this. We're getting to a point where we're servicing the needs of the existing transit system that was in place. But I want, I'd like to know if you can set the expectations for the future. The calls I get, the emails I get being on the Transit Commission Board are calls from newer developments in Thorold, Paul Robinson West, Rolling Meadows. Those people want to know when they will receive transit. And I know we have a master plan in progress. But I'd like you to explain to council when you project to see us servicing those newer communities, explaining the cost and explaining how those routes will be put in place, whether it's a request of a local municipality or whether it's a decision of Niagara Transit.
Sure. Through the mayor to the council. So there's a lot to unpack there, counselor. What I can say is the master planning process absolutely is a horizon document, right? So it's a, it's a not what Niagara is, it's a next Niagara version of what Niagara Transit needs to be, you know, within probably, I would say, you know, four or five phases inside a ten-year period. There's two components that go into, you know, developing service or adding service to a community. Number one, that is at the, the pleasure of our board and their approval, as well as at Regional Council and their approval of our budget. But to understand adding service, you also understand that when you add service, you add service hours, which means you add dollars, right? So whatever you want to add in service is considered investment. And it's investment by this city council, but it's investment truly at the regional budget level. In the master planning process, the expansion of, I'll say specialty services to create that demand or to at least gauge the demand for maybe smaller vehicles or small buses to be introduced, leading up to the introduction of that forty-foot fixed route service because that's what's needed in that area, that's incremental over time. It is not hard, or at least it's not arduous, to introduce specialty services as long as they're appropriately funded. The do more with less is over in transit. So we are at capacity. So when we talk about, we see empty buses. You see empty buses going to the college. You don't see them coming back with everybody standing to the yellow line. So there's, you know, there's a little bit of, you know, understanding how the system works to understand what bus you're looking at and when and why it's at capacity or it seems like you don't see very many heads in the windows. But as far as, you know, adding routes and services, that definitely would be done with consultation with the communities. I think I said that earlier, that, you know, you know your city best. We want, we're not going to put something on the road that doesn't make sense for, for your community. But you're also going to have to develop a relationship with us where you trust us to be the experts in transit that we are. And, you know, that what we bring to the table is what you don't know about transit. And what you bring is what we don't know about Thorold. So I'm looking forward to looking at the master plan once it's approved by both the board and Regional Council and then starting to have those planning conversations. Because we're a little behind the times with particular developments in your south area, for sure. And that is going to need some catch-up with bus stops, with bus pads, with shelters, lighting. You know, there's a lot that goes into this. So this isn't an overnight thing. It may be the introduction of what service we can provide you. But again, it's going to be based on local service hours and that is a direct investment by the city of Thorold.
Counselor Longo.
Yeah, thank you. No, I appreciate that. I think, I just wanted council to have a good understanding where we're going with this. And it's certainly not going to be free. We don't have a free bus right now, right? So to increase service will cost investment in capital and human capital and absolutely it's going to cost more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any further questions? Seeing none, I want to thank Carla, Melanie, and Jordan for coming tonight. This has been a great discussion and it's been long overdue. And this is why I wanted just to come to council. You've answered a lot of questions and concerns and we need to work together moving forward to make sure that not only we're efficient, but we start servicing some of the areas which Counselor Longo talked about.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for your time, Mary Ugalini. Thank you, council.
Okay, we're going to move on to nine point three, the DQ Road Environmental Assessment Study. And I'll call on Andrew McGregor, Senior Planner, Project Manager, and Nick Palomba, Vice President Transportation for RV Anderson Associates Limited for the DQ Road Environmental Assessment Study presentation. And welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of council. And I am here to talk to the DQ Road Class EA from Richmond Street to Beaver Dam's Road in the city of Thorold. Slide, please. Next slide, please. Thank you. So DQ Road was identified as having poor and deteriorating road surface conditions with uneven surfaces and requiring significant rehabilitation throughout. And this provided an opportunity to improve the overall corridor. The city's transportation master plan also recommends to class, reclassifying DQ Road to an urban arterial roadway and implementing active transportation through a complete streets lens to improve connectivity for pedestrians and cyclists by trying, by tying into the active transportation facilities already in place west of Richmond Street and existing and planned active transportation along Beaver Dam's Road to the east. And as you can see there, in summary, the EA study was initiated to review opportunities within the study area to address roadway surface issues due, generally due to increased wear and tear, traffic operations and safety, including intersection improvements, improvements to pedestrian and cyclist accommodation and connectivity, upgrades to underground infrastructure, including the sanitary sewer and water main, improved roadway drainage, stormwater management, and finally, improved parking facilities and access to Mel Swart Lake Gibson Conservation Park. Slide, please. The study area includes DQ Road from Richmond Street in the west to Beaver Dam's Road in the, to the south or the east, I guess. The study area is surrounded by residential land uses along the north side and the Mel Swart Lake Gibson Conservation Park on the south side, which is also identified as a provincially significant wetland area. DQ Road is currently a two-lane rural road, one in each direction with ditches to accommodate stormwater runoff and drainage. Slide, please. I'm not going to get into the weeds of this slide. But as per Schedule B of the municipal class environmental assessment process, a number of alternative solutions were investigated to address the previously identified problem or opportunity statement. And these were, these were evaluated through Phase Two of the study. And the alternatives that we, that were considered included do nothing, which is basically required to be evaluated as per the Class EA planning process to provide a baseline for comparison to other alternatives. And under this scenario, the maintaining, we would maintain the existing condition. The other alternatives that were considered included a seven point five meter pavement surface where DQ Road would have a roadway width of seven point five meters. And this would provide a certain level of design consistency with the eastern and western study limits. The other alternatives that were considered included an eight meter, an eight point five meter, and a ten point five meter width pavement surface, which would not provide the, the design consistency as the seven point five meter right-of-way width. However, they all can, they all included measures, various measures of active transportation, including a multi-path and sidewalk on the north side. So in evaluating each of the alternative solutions that I just mentioned, we looked at five key criteria. at five key criteria, and those are identified along the, on the column on the, on the left-hand side. The key criteria included the, the technical, socioeconomic environment, natural environment, the archaeological and cultural heritage environments, and, and costs, overall costs. So following an evaluation against each of the identified criteria, alternative number two, 7.5-meter pavement surface was selected as the recommended solution. Slide, please. So as, as I just mentioned, the 7.5-meter pavement surface provides design consistency with the newly constructed road widths at the eastern and western study limits, and includes a three-meter multi-use path that would tie into the multi-use path that's already constructed west of Richmond Street. The, the solution also provides a number of traffic calming benefits through narrower lanes in comparison to the other alternatives, as well as the provision of speed cushions. And it also reduces the overall environmental footprint and impacts to the adjacent wetland and park in comparison to the other options that were considered. This, this solution was presented to the public at the Second Public Information Center, and comments received at the, from the public and technical agencies were taken into consideration, and this recommendation was generally, eventually confirmed to be the preferred solution moving forward in the study. Slide, please. I apologize about the, the scale of the, the preferred design, but it was, this was kind of the best we could do. Up on the, the left, upper-left corner is the western limits of the study, Richmond Street, and the bottom right is the, shows the eastern limits of the study, Beaver Dam's, Beaver Dam's Road. And this is a plan view of the preferred design of the, of the corridor, and it shows basically, just to reiterate, DQ Road would remain as a two-lane corridor with one lane in each direction, and each travel lane would be 3.7 meters wide, as shown in the cross-section on the, on the previous slide. No additional turn lanes are provided at any of the study area intersections. Some of the other key features of the design as shown on the slide include enhanced safety through minor road realignment to improve sightlines east, or sorry, west of DQ Woods Crescent. As you can see up there, the, the large green area, the road is pulled to the, further to the south, closer to the wetland. Improved traffic calming through a series of speeds, speed cushions, allowing large vehicles to pass unaffected and reducing passenger car speeds. Another key feature includes improved active transportation connectivity through the corridor through a three-meter multi-use pathway that's separated from the vehicle lanes along the south side of the corridor that will ultimately tie into the future trail along the south side of Beaver Dam's Road, and a wider, or a wide 1.8-meter pedestrian sidewalk along the north side of the corridor. Drainage and stormwater management will also be upgraded from the current granular shoulder to an urban curb and gutter with the addition of a number of catch basins, ditch inlet catch basins, and additional culverts. We're also connecting the sanitary sewer to an existing manhole located on Richmond Street and implementing a new water main connection along DQ Road connecting to the existing water main along Abbey, Abbey Drive to Richmond Street. Finally, the, the last one I'd talk about is the formalized parking. We introduced formalized parking for vehicles accessing Melswort Lake Gibson Park. Slide, please. So the, the Environmental Assessment Project File Report and the preliminary design was submitted to key technical agencies and indigenous communities prior to the issuance, preparation of the Notice of Study Completion. And it was during this time that the, the city successfully engaged with the Six Nations of the Grand River in developing a series of measures to mitigate the impacts to the wetland. These included additional restoration of habitat, tree replacement increases, coordination with the Conservation Authority, and, well, this tree replacement policy would be coordinated with the Conservation Authority and the Six Nations of the Grand River, and as well as fragmities, additional fragmities treatment and extension of the, the monitoring program that was initially identified in the project file report through the, through the study. The project file report was submitted following liaison with the Six Nations of the Grand River and other technical agencies. It was submitted for a 30-day public review on January 31st, 2025, where we received, the city received no Section 16 order requests, which would bump the level of investigation and study up to a higher level. And the detailed, so the detailed design may commence following the 30-day ministry hold period, which is anticipated April 4th, 2025, next month. And so the city is recommending that the Municipal Class Environmental Assessment for the DQ Road Reconstruction Project be received for information.
Thank you so much, Andrew. And I'll open the floor for questions from council. Go ahead, Councilor O'Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the presenter. Thank you for presenting this. I'm wondering if you can bring up Slide Five from the presentation. That's the elevation view of the roadway. The reason I'm bringing this up is just to talk a little bit about the lighting. The lighting, the street lamp, of course, provides light for the street, but we must also keep in mind that lighting's very important for the pedestrians. And I have heard complaints of the walkways from Richmond westward, where the lighting, in effect, does a wonderful job lighting up the street but keeps the sidewalks in darkness at night. So I'm just wondering if you could maybe talk about that or see if there's another approach we can take here, if it can be dual lighting? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to council. The lighting proposed for this section is, whether it be decorative or not, but it'll be your standard height lighting for illuminating the roadway. The roadway and both the sidewalk on the north side and the multi-use path on the south side would be fully, excuse me, fully illuminated to current standards. So you wouldn't get that concern over dark spots or, you know, public, personal safety concerns at night where you're not visible or where a driver's not able to distinguish someone walking on the trail. So the illumination levels would be to, to current standards for this section.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have a question? Go ahead, Councilor Seton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. Thank you very much for coming. Nice to see you, Nick. You know as well as everybody else how important this is here, that it's been a disaster trying to walk, walk a dog over here or anything, so I really appreciate this and coming in, and this design looks fantastic. What was the timeline? Because I think you said you, you also recognize that there may be a trail at the, the old rail trail maybe coming in as well. What's the timeline do you think this can be done by?
Through, through you, Mr. Mayor, to council. I think that'd probably be a better question answered by staff. I mean, this would be one construction season, but it would obviously be tied to funding.
Right, right. Okay. Now, that's all I needed to know was the season, so thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Go ahead, Councilor Longo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the presenter. I'm just looking at the conceptual diagrams here, the colored ones, and I understand the multi-use trail we currently have in place is on the north side of DQ, and the plan is here to have it cross over to the south side and run all the way to Beaver Dam's. On the north side of the street, though, it shows some areas of sidewalk. Can you, I, I can't really see where the sidewalks would start and where they would stop. Would, would they start all the way over at Richmond Street or further to the east?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the council. Yeah, on the north side, the sidewalk would be continuous from Richmond Street to the new sidewalk that was built at the, at the far east end. So you would have a continuous sidewalk along the north side of the road, no gaps.
Okay, so thanks for that. So, so although it's not colored on the diagram going all the way to Beaver Dam's Road, there is an existing sidewalk there now?
Yeah, to clarify, yeah, it wasn't colored for the public because that's existing infrastructure. We're not proposing any change to, we're tying into that infrastructure.
Okay, perfect. Now, and again, just to stay on this point, so the sidewalk, then that would go to Richmond Street, I don't believe there's an existing sidewalk there now.
On, on DQ?
On DQ.
No, there's no.
So would, would the sidewalk go all the way from the corner of Richmond along the north side?
North side.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. The sidewalk would run the entire stretch of this, right, from Beaver Dam's over to Richmond.
Okay, so even though it's not indicated there, we'd be looking at?
Right now, there's a current sidewalk from Beaver Dam's to Ivy.
Correct.
So you'd be extending that all the way to Richmond, correct?
Clarity, that's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for clarifying. That's it for me.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Councilor DeAngelo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, guys, for presenting. Nick, good to see you. Just a, a couple of questions looking at the design. I like the component of adding the additional parking closer to, so DQ Woods. I'm looking at slide, that slide there.
Yes.
There's the additional parking that's angled, so would that be a one-way entrance into the, into that section?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to council. Currently, there is a parking, an informal parking area, and cars pull in forward and then they reverse out onto DQ. They just park in the grass in that area. There's a large, I think, telephone pole that kind of defines that area. The idea with this is they pull in forwards at the west end, and they drive through park angle, and then they reverse and pull out forward and come up the other end. So it is a one-way operation. That way, as they're coming out on the street, they're coming out forward, it can look left and right and enter the road safely.
Yeah, I just, if, if you're doing that, so most of the turning will be done, just to follow up, most of the turning will, to get into that parking lot will be done on the western, western side, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Would it make more sense just aligning with the street that's there? Because you're going to have cars turning at the street, and you're going to have cars turning into the parking lot quite, like, quite immensely. So would it make more sense lining that up, similar to what you did on the bottom slide, where you lined up the entranceway with the intersection? Would that, would that make any sense?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We can look at that. I think we're starting to get into the significant natural area there if we pull that parking lot any further west, and the impacts. When we looked at this, we tried to position respecting the natural environment and only impacting it where absolutely necessary. It's something that could be revisited as it moves a detailed design to see if it could be done, but I think the reason is where it is is because of the constraints that are there.
Okay, that, that might make sense. I'm just thinking more at the, the road bends, people drive fast on it, you're going to have people turning, you're going to have people going into DQ Woods, so it may create more of a traffic hazard going forward. I know it'll have a bit of an environmental impact, but I'll leave that in your hands to, to look at it a little bit more closely to see if it's feasible.
As, just as a follow-up, a part of this is we recognize that today you do have some speed issues out there today. When you put in a smoother, flatter, more comfortable surface, you, likelihood that people would want to drive and feel more comfortable driving at higher speeds. That's why we've done two things. We've taken a reduced roadway width, so, and we've also introduced traffic calming in the form of speed cushions, which is a form of speed hump, but it doesn't impact larger vehicles like fire and ambulance because they can bypass them without actually having to rise that, do the rise. So I think the issue here is we recognize that there will be more traffic, the park is getting more and more activity and more and more walking activity as well, but I think the speed of traffic through this section of road, including the all-way stop that's being placed at, at Abbey, are all going to bring the overall speeds down. So those turning activities in that friction may not be as significant as it would be under today's configuration.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, if I could follow up. You answered my next question, which I'll, I'll get to that, but I, I find speed won't go down. Speed will continually increase when you have a flatter surface regardless. Councilor Gerroz could attest to that. We're putting more stop signs, more speed reduction throughout our city. Unfortunately, people are just driving way too fast, especially in an open section. That's why I was thinking if it goes to DQ, there's always an option of putting another stop sign there if the line, the parking lot aligns with DQ Woods, a little cul-de-sac there. That, that was my sort of thought process sitting on the Road Safety Committee, because I, I could see this potentially coming back with that. But I just want to get to the other answer that you gave me regarding the speed cushions. That's the first time I've heard of speed cushions. I've heard of speed humps. So they're not reverse speed humps. They're still speed humps when you're talking about a speed, a speed cushion?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. So a traditional speed hump, it raises the, the roadway surface across the entire width of the road. A speed cushion is a series of those humps, but they have a gap between them, and that gap is placed at the wheelbase width, width of large vehicles like a fire truck or an ambulance. So they can actually drive through those gaps and not be impacted by the vertical deflection, but passenger car will always have to go with one tire over the hump, and it provides that same benefit that a traditional speed hump does. Plus, the cushions don't go right to the, to the edges of the road, so drainage isn't impacted with them that runs along the curbs. But it really is more for emergency services and the concerns that a lot of emergency services have with the speed, the travel time or the response time reduction that traditional speed humps provide.
Okay, just a, through you, Mr. Mayor. Was any consideration given to reverse speed humps where they're actually cut into the surface? I, I know we haven't done too many of those in Thorold because the roads have already been established, but if you're redoing the road here, then you can put the proper base to do that. Any thought, consideration given to the reverse speed humps, or you think the speed cushions are a better option out on this road?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Speed cushions are a proven effective travel, traffic calming technique. I don't have a lot of experience with the, with the reverse ones. Doesn't mean they can't be explored, but I think you, anything that's reversed or dipped, you have to think about drainage and all the other things that go along with it, but I'd just say for this exercise, we didn't look at that. We purely recommended this, this approach. We looked at a series of techniques, but for this one here specifically, we picked this one here to, to be more responsive to emergency services.
Okay. And just the, the final point is, I know you're speaking emergency services. This is timely. The transit was just here earlier. They, they have buses that flow through this road here. Any consideration giving for bus stops on DQ Road or any islands for, for buses? Any consideration in that respect?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Transit was considered through the design. We checked with the narrow pavement and the radiuses that buses would be able to utilize the road. We know there's a number of buses that utilize it today. In terms of transit stop locations, that would be part of that planning and exercise that Carla was talking about, where staff get together with Niagara Regional Transit, talk about the service that's here, give them the opportunity to show what they like or don't like about current transit placement, but also the city to put forward ideas of, based on comments that have come forward of, you know, either enhancements in the location of them, where they may not be at the right spot, or the amenities that exist at them or don't exist.
Okay, that, that's my concern, is that, that transit actually looks at this, especially the intersection at Abbey, making sure there's enough of turning radius for the buses that go through there. It, you know, if we could get them to look at it now as opposed to when it's being constructed, that would be, I think, to me, ideal. At least they could have some input on it.
Absolutely, and that's, as this project moves into detailed design, that's when those, those fine tuning of any specific requirements would happen. At this level, you, you look to make sure the road is functional, can accommodate the size buses that are currently operating. The next phase is where now you get down to the fine details.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other questions? Go ahead, Councilor Seton.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming in. I just have one question about the parking lot there. Is the light going to change, lighting in that? Is it going to match the one that's on DQ in the parking area?
The illumination of the parking lot?
Yeah.
The illumination of the parking lot would be determined by the municipality how you want to illuminate it. Do you want that illuminated? Do you want that illuminated so you have lights on all night? What level of lighting that's required? The park, the illumination along the roadway is really set for safety. Parking lots, as you see, parking lots are lit in different fashion. Some, some people would like, we heard actually through the public meetings, some people would prefer it be lit all night to ensure that you don't get activity happening there that the neighborhood doesn't want happening there.
Yeah, I just thought it'd be nice if it matched with the new part of the lighting, too.
Oh, I, sorry. All right. I would think, yes, the, the design standard of the lighting would match whatever is on, on the roadway.
And we could speak about having a bike rack there so they can lock up the bikes there and chain up at a different point?
Those particular amenities will all be brought into the planning and the detailed design portion because obviously with every amenity you bring in, you want it to, to service. We're trying to bring people walking, cycling. You have the dock park now down the road. Eventually, there'll be a trail connection that lets you get down to that point. Really have a connected system, but if you don't have those amenities for people to secure their bikes and that, they're not gonna be as comfortable.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Counselor Hanley.
Thank you. If I could ask, you were talking about, through you, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, both road services and asphalt. Are you taking into consideration, as one of the counselors has mentioned, that we just had the transit here in regards to bus services, the electrification of buses? A standard bus today, a diesel bus weighs 28,000 pounds, a 40-foot bus, a 40-foot electric bus weighs 53,000 pounds, almost double the weight. And I asked, I didn't bring it up in the transit was here because they really haven't finalized it, but I know of municipalities that they didn't take that into consideration, that have electrified their buses and it deteriorated the road surfaces in a period of three years. So are you gonna take that into consideration that the electrification of vehicles adds more stress on infrastructure because of the weight of the vehicles?
Go ahead.
So would that be taken into consideration, seeing it'll be a bus route?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the counselor. I would say that city staff, I don't want to speak too much for them, but in terms of pavement structure and what, how you build your arterial roads, your collector roads and your local roads, it's all geared to the, the traffic and the repetitive pounding that they'll take. So as far as your standard for an arterial road, which this is currently classed as, I would say the city would investigate these. If it's a bus route, it should be built to a standard that can, can, can manage the, the service and then you get your service life out of it. So with the regional road system, you know, I'll leave this maybe to the city staff to finalize whether they're revisiting their pavement structures. But generally, we get a geotechnical report based on what that road is going to have to manage and carry. We get a pavement design that is recommended to service that, that traffic and that loading so that you get the, you know, projected life cycle out of, sorry, the projected life out of your investment. So the short answer is it will be looked at, but not necessarily specific to electric buses, but to whatever the, the future loading on these roads will be.
Okay, I thank you for that answer. Yeah, that's just something that we need to look in, future forecasting, that they're expecting everybody to have electric vehicles by 2035, and they are substantially ever than not. Vehicles that we drive in the road state, it's gonna be an impact to our infrastructure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Go ahead, Counselor O'Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. I'm just wondering if you could explain on the green patch just to the west of DQ Woods Court on the north, it says removal of the existing asphalt. And I'm going to assume that's gonna be a planted area? Is that what the green represents?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. We, as we're fixing the curvature of the road to improve sightlines, we're actually pulling the road away from DQ Court, which actually improves the sightlines with the gateway features that are currently at the, at the intersection, but it does create that large open space. What exactly, it will be green, but what exactly is gonna be done there would be something that would be explored in the next phase of the study, but it does create that opportunity to do something positive there.
Okay, and what about the gray patch that divides the two? What, what does that represent?
I think that may just be a driveway. It's hard to see.
That is a driveway.
Yeah.
That's a driveway. There's houses there.
Good, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I want to thank Andrew and Nick for your presentation and thank you for coming to counsel. It's a very interesting design and we look forward to move forward on this project. We gotta move forward to the report first.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Counsel.
So we have P W C S 14 2025, DQ Road Environmental Assessment Study. Can I get a mover and a secondary? Forward, I got Counsel O'Hare and Counsel DeAngelo, and the report's up. Go ahead, Counsel Longo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question for staff. What are the next steps here? I understand this is just an environmental assessment, but where do we go from here?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The next step is for us to get a consultant on board to do, finalize the detailed design of the, the project and then tender and have it constructed. Probably the construction's gonna happen sometime next year.
Okay, so have we budgeted for this already?
Yes.
Okay, it is, all right. Great, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we had a mover and a secondary, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. There's no delegations, there's items for consent. We have items for consent 11-1 to 11-6. Can I get a mover and a secondary? I got Counsel Decker and Counsel O'Hare will use that for all of them. Is there anyone that wants to pull an item? Go ahead, Counsel DeAngelo.
11-1 and 11-4. And 11-2.
11-2?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. So we got 11-3, 11-5, and 11-6. I had a mover and a secondary, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. 11-1, go ahead, Counsel DeAngelo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just looking at the report. That's regarding the Mayor's Youth Committee Liaison Group. I was just looking at the membership and just had a couple of questions on how was determined that three students from the Thorold Secondary School and three students from the Dennis Moore Secondary School and then three youth representatives. I know in the past when they had the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee, they also had the other schools represented, the Prince of Wales, Richmond Street, Monsignor Clancy at the time, now it's called Our Lady of the Holy Rosary. Is there any consideration that's gonna be given to them in terms of having a representative on there? Because I, I just don't want it to feel like it's just the secondary schools and the primary schools.
Well, the idea was, and it was taken from the previous one, was that it was high school age students that were involved in this. And then when they're finished their high school, obviously, they're done. And then the ones in elementary move up to high school and, and get their opportunity to be involved. That was the, the way it was when I was a counselor and we had the youth advisor. It was all high school age kids.
When I was on it, we had elementary school kids. They played a key role because they look at things a little differently than high school kids or high school students, I shouldn't call them kids. Just, and I'm just wondering if the ability of, of the other three youth representatives, if that could be from one of the other schools, if there's any interest there. I, I just don't want to exclude them. I'm not looking to make this bigger. I'm just trying to make sure that you have some good representation across the board.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the way that the terms of reference are currently worded, it does give quite a bit of flexibility to staff to fill those other three seats in a number of ways. So that could, could be looked at if there is sufficient interest.
Yeah, again, I'm not sure if there is or isn't, but as long as there's that flexibility, I, I think that would be appreciated. Or the other one you could put is three representatives from the Catholic school system and three representatives from the second, from the public school system.
They've also, and there's flexibility there because you may only get two from one, there might be four from the other. So it's, it's very open-ended so that it's, the hands aren't tied.
Well, it says up to three, Mr. Mayor. You can't take four from a school that...
Well, if you read down further through the terms, it talks about the flexibility to fill that because you hope, and we hope to get more than that, but anyways.
Okay, as long as the, the other schools can be represented, that, that's the point I wanted to bring up. And I know in the past, we had some business leaders that sat on the committee, too, that worked as a good liaison. Again, I don't know if that's something that's interested, but I just thought those are a couple of things that I saw that were sort of different than the past. Thank you.
Thank you. You want to comment on 11-2?
Yeah, I just, for 11-2, just with, I know Counsel DeRose wants to sit on the Port Robinson Committee. I appreciate his efforts for that. The only point I was gonna make out is when, when he does get into that position, if we could just update our website, because there's committees that some of our counselors are sitting on that are not updated. So I think maybe just going over that, giving it a, a good retooling would be good to let people know which counselors sit on what committees.
The clerk says that he'll make sure that whatever we do here, it'll get upgraded on the website.
Well, not just this one, but look at, because there's other, I sit on three committees and it's not posted on there. And I know Counsel Longo sits on a committee that's not posted on there. So some of them are advisory committees, so just...
The clerk will look into it.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and 11-4?
11-4, I was just gonna comment. I do have a conflict with JBM Office Systems. I did see a check in there. It's, it's like a 39-page report, so I can't remember exactly what page I saw it on it. But my brother does work for JBM Office Systems, so I want to declare a conflict of interest on any checks that are issued to that organization.
Okay. Okay, so 11-1 and 11-2, we have the same mover and a secondary. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. 11-4, we'll do a vote with the same mover and a secondary. Counsel DeAngelo's declared a conflict on that one. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, that takes us into items for consideration. And up first, we have DF 4, 2025, Water and Urban Service Area Budgets. Can I get a mover and a secondary for that? Counsel Sentence and Counsel O'Hare. And that is now on the screen and our Director of Finance, are you gonna be answering questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Maria Morel's here to answer if there's any questions regarding that report. I don't see any questions. I had a mover and a secondary. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. That's because you have such a detailed report. DF 5, 2025, Tariff Response Motion. Can I get a mover and a secondary for that? Counsel Decker and Counsel O'Hare, any discussions regarding that?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Counsel. Counsel Hanley, go ahead. You're muted, Counsel Hanley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your main. I, I can't support this here, even if it's for information purposes because I believe the report's biased, and I'll explain why is that. On key facts, you put US have indicated they're imposing a 25% tariff on Canadian goods. And then when you go to analysis, it says that the US has threatened the imposition of tariffs on Canadian goods imported into the US. At the time of writing the report, it's been delayed, and there actually is no tariff in place. But yet yesterday, I don't know if Counsel is aware of this, but China imposed 100% tariffs effective yesterday on our canola, canola oil, canola cakes, and peas. And effective March 21st, there's gonna be a 25% tariff from China on our fish and seafood products as well as our pork products. So to me, it says the US has threatened, China never threatened, China actually did it. But why isn't China a part of this? It's like we're targeting the United States and the current administration. That's all this is, is political, as far as I'm concerned. And I don't believe the report should even be on the floor because we're municipal counselors. We don't have to do anything about tariffs, you know, and I'm sure Counsel is not aware of that. Is Counsel aware of, or any Counsel is aware of what they call the Terrorist Act? And I don't know if Counsel is aware, but on January the 1st, 2024, long before the current tariffs that were imposed or expected to be imposed by the United States, the Canada, in fact, imposed a 263% tariff on chicken, 179 on turkey, 175 on butter, 155 on, on milk, 147 on cheese, 77 on beef and pork. So this tariff thing's been going on way before this current administration, United States, even took office, and that's what this is all about. So if we're gonna write a report, we need to impose it and let people know that, in fact, on January 1st, 2024, the Canadian government imposed tariffs on 243 different countries. And I can give the information. It's right on the Canada's website. So the, the report's biased. It really doesn't show. They've imposed tariffs from Afghanistan to Zimbabwe. I got the list. And when I read this, I was like, this is just, it's biased, it's targeting a specific country, the United States, when it should be targeting China as well as the United States. And if, you know, because, you know, are we gonna say, don't buy China products? But Canada imparted $9.2 billion worth of cell phones last year.
Okay, Counsel.
So to me, I can't support the report, that it's a biased report, and I don't believe it shouldn't even be in front of a municipal council to discuss.
Our Director of Finance will answer this because this is a report on procurement.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I do take exception to having my report called biased. It's not biased. There are a lot of changes that are happening daily. At the time of the report, that was pre-China, pre-Afghanistan, pre-everything. So basically, what the report intends to do is, number one, is supporting domestic procurement policies. Number two is...
I understand that.
Number two, advocating for trade policy adjustments to push for exemptions and reductions in, in the US tariffs. And the last thing is interprovincial trade collaboration to eliminate some of the, of some of the barriers that we see right now between our provinces. At the end of the day, the way that the legislation, both provincial and federal, is geared right now is that it, it prohibits local preference and a Canada preference. And what we're looking for from a procurement perspective is for the governments to eliminate that, that barrier so that we can look at a bi-local or a team-Canada approach. I can tell you that the Clerk's Department has received 18 of these motions from other municipalities. Locally, we've seen them from Lincoln, Niagara Falls, Port Colborne, Niagara Region as a joint statement with the local municipalities, St. Catherine's and Welland.
Okay, I appreciate that. I think that, but my point is this here, you specifically mentioned the United States of America. When China is, in fact, already imposed tariffs, is effective yesterday, 100%, and will be doing it March 21st, this was actually decided on March the 8th by the Chinese government. So that's why I said, like, you know, it's specifically targeting or mentioning the US, whereas China's, what they're doing to us also threatens us, too. So as far as a procurement policy...
Counsel Hanley. Yeah? You've already said that once, okay, and you've made your point and it's been responded to. So I'm not gonna give you the floor to say the same thing over again, okay? So who's next? Is there any other questions? Seeing none. All those in... You have a question, Counsel?
Yeah, I have a question and a couple of comments. I see the rationale of the, when I'm reading the motion, be it further resolved. Basically, I'm not gonna go into reading it all, but it's, it talks with the Director of Finance mentioning about removing interprovincial trade barriers, continuing to push for exemptions, tariff reductions via diplomatic channels. I'm, I'm agreeable to that, and then also it acknowledges regarding, the second part acknowledges economic challenges posed by US tariffs. It commits to adopting strategies for local and domestic economy. There, there's some value in there, and I agree. The one I'm concerned about, the resolution part, is what it talks about right before the be it first... The one I'm concerned about, the resolution part, is what it talks about right before the be it further, now for be it resolved, it talks about the City of Thoral calls on provincial and federal governments to remove any impediments to municipalities preferentially procuring from Canadian companies. Just because you're a Canadian company doesn't mean you manufacture in Canada, so I'm a little concerned with that. And I, I'll give you an example. If, if anyone saw this article, it was produced by the CBC. It's a story about tiny homes arrived in Hamilton. Councillor asked why city bought in China units for thirty-five thousand K. Well, if you go on to read the article, it talks about a Branford company that was incorporated in August, then went out and purchased these Chinese-made products, imported them through the US into Canada, and then sold them to Hamilton. Like, so when you say Canadian companies, to me, that, that really opens the door for a lot of stuff. And I know, to me, this is getting into federal and provincial politics. So I think this, the resolving part of letting it become diplomatic channels is where it should go. This is a prime minister issue, this is a provincial issue. It's not specifically a Thoral one in terms of how we're going to manage Canadian companies, if they're following the proper rules or not. So that has me a little concerned, because it's going to... I, I see how the staff would like to change the procurement policy, but if it says Canadian companies, I'm a little concerned. Because they may not be true Canadian companies in the sense that they're purchasing either American products, Chinese products, any products that they want, and just filtering it through, saying, hey, I'm a Canadian company, buy from me. So I, I, I'd like to know how that would be addressed.
Go ahead, I'll let Maria answer.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. I, I think the intent of what we're trying to do is, right now, there's two agreements that sort of bind our hands from a procurement standpoint. There's the Canada Free Trade Agreement, and there's the Comprehensive Economic and Trade Agreement. And what those agreements do is, is it prohibits a, a local or a, a regional or even a, a country preference when you're doing procurement. So what we're looking for is, we're asking for the, for the governments to kind of relax those restrictions so that if municipality or, you know, municipality feels that we would like to support the local businesses, we would like to support the local economy, that we have an opportunity to do so without violating these agreements.
Yes, I, I agree with that. There, there's, that's not my debate. The debate becomes what is considered Canadian in terms of producing products and delivering the products. That, that's my concern. If that can be filtered through staff with the amended information that the federal and the provincial government are doing, I'm okay with that. It's just, that's the point that sort of sticks with me, is I don't want people to take unfair advantage of Canadians and, and selling a product that's not Canadian with the assumption that, hey, they'll just buy it. And then the other one is, if it's giving staff the option, because unfortunately, our economies in North America are tied to each other, and economies of scale are prevalent, but also what happens is, is supply and demand is also a big component of that. So I don't want to make, I want to make sure that the municipality's not put in a position where they have to pick a, a Canadian supplier, but that can supply, suppliers' prices like ten times what another supplier would be. So I don't want to put us at a position of that, because we also have to be cognizant of how our tax dollars are spent. Now, it, it, it's getting a little dicey, because it's, we're, you know, you're talking about a specific country that's imposing tariffs, and you're trying to deal with that. I think that's the federal and provincial's role in this, is to negotiate and come up with a diplomatic solution. I just don't want to get caught in a position where we're spending extra, because we have to buy Canadian. I think there's, the onus has to be, we have to get value for our taxpayers, but at the same time, trying to support our local economy. And to me, that's through the procurement policy, but then we have to look at that on a small local level, a small level, such as what we buy that doesn't need, I'll use, our, our pins, our city pins, like, they should be manufactured in Canada. Obviously, they'll be more expensive. Like, anything that we're buying that may not have to go through a purchasing agreement, stuff that falls below a, a certain level, I think that's what we really have to focus on from a municipal level, is making sure that we're buying Canadian-made products to support our own local, local-made and Canadian-made products. So there's a lot into this, and, and to me, it's starting to outreach past what our role as a councillor is. That's what I'm concerned about. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, councillor. O'Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to our CFO. Thank you for this report. These are challenging times. We're getting faced with some very, very difficult threats. And we have to, and we should support Canadian when we can. So I applaud you for taking the step on this, and I fully support it.
Go ahead, councillor, to intervene.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for bringing this forward. Every municipality supported this, because this is a time to show unity. I mean, I'm a little bit embarrassed that we're talking like this. Everybody supported it. What signal are we sending out to people? This is a time where we stick together. That's the problem with Canada. We don't stick together. We have to stick together and get through this. And what little bits and pieces here that we're arguing about is totally doesn't make, is irrelevant. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councillor Longo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just make a comment here. You know, I used to sell for a local company years ago, and we used to, you know, look for the local advantage in, in being a Canadian company. And the purchasers would always tell us that that ability wasn't there. They couldn't, they couldn't do that. This is opening the door for local, provincial, Canadian companies, and I understand what Councillor Deange is saying, to have a better opportunity to sell in Canada. So you know what it says, we're going to prioritize Canadian businesses. That doesn't mean we're only going to purchase from... Obviously, we're going to trust our procurement officer and our finance department to spend our money wisely. And if something costs ten times more that's made in Canada, I don't expect we're going to buy it. But we're going to do our best to try and spend public money properly. So I support this. It, it takes away a barrier that's been there for years. So I'm going to support this, and I hope we can move on from this. And I'd like a recorded vote, please.
Yes. Anyone else? Okay. Councillor DeRose, you had your hand up.
Through, through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, you know, I, I, I'm almost in the middle, but I, I have to agree more with Councillor Longo, what he just said, and I will support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And well-written report to our CFO. Thank you.
Okay, we got, we've been, a recorded vote has been asked for, and so I'll turn it over to our clerk.
Okay. Through you, Mr. Mayor. So I believe we're, it was moved by Councillor Decker? Okay, so we'll start with you, Councillor Decker.
Yeah, I'm in support of the motion.
Okay, councillor Edavitas.
Canada, oh, support of the motion.
Okay, councillor O'Hare.
In support, thank you.
Councillor Deange.
In favor.
In support.
Okay, councillor Hanley?
Against.
Okay, councillor DeRose?
In favor.
Councillor Longo?
In favor.
Good. In favor.
Okay, so that, that is eight in favor, one against, so that passes. Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Now I'm going to turn to DS five, twenty-twenty-five, twelve-point-three, Planning Services Agreement with the region of Niagara. Can I get a mover and a seconder? If I put the report on the floor, councillor Decker, councillor Longo. Okay, and we'll get the report on the floor. And then we'll open the floor for questions to city staff. Go ahead, councillor Longo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to staff. Just one quick question here. It says we're going to have the regional planning department, which doesn't, I guess, have any work to do, so now we subcontract them out, but it says we're going to recoup the fees paid to the region from the applicant. So will, will we be able to recoup all the fees that we're going to pay the region?
Jason, are you going to answer this? Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Longo. Thank you for the question. The answer is yes. So the fees that we would incur from the region would be directly applied to the applicant.
Perfect, thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, councillor O'Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Jason. Jason, so I'm kind of wondering if the regional planners are going to be swamped. Are they going to be able to keep up again, or is, is this going to cause even more of a quagmire that we're facing?
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That question has been directly asked to the region. The region has assured us that they have the resources to be able to provide the service to the municipalities that sign on to this agreement.
Okay, and I, you know, I guess this would be a question to the mayor or our CFO. Are we still advertising for planners?
Well, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Our goal is still to staff our planning department, okay?
If there's any planners watching, here's the number.
Go ahead, councillor Sentence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just along the lines of what councillor O'Hare was saying. So I'll just make a comment. I've said this many times, don't give up those other companies just yet until we know we can keep up, because one of our biggest problems in getting people is the, the back plug. So let's get caught up and, and don't give up anybody yet, please. That's all.
Okay. I can only say from a regional perspective that a lot of the duties at the end of this month that were regional and municipal get switched over to the municipal end. But the region still has a staff there, and different municipalities are contracting their services, and they pay a fee, just like you would with a consultant or whatever. And I think so far, there's about six municipalities that have signed up for some level of service, but I can't give you the exact. Am I correct, Jason?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I believe, the last I heard, we would be the eighth municipality.
Okay, so, so we will not be the only municipality accessing services, okay? Yeah. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. PWCS ten, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five Community Grants Program. Can I get a mover and a seconder to put that on the floor? Councillor Sentence and councillor Edavitas. Okay, and that is up on the floor, and we have two of our staff here to answer questions. Go ahead, councillor O'Hare.
Actually, sorry, Mr. Mayor, it's a comment, so I'll wait for questions first.
Well, the, the report's on the floor, so you can make a comment or ask.
All right. I just want to, having gone through these numbers and the groups that have applied, and the success that they've all been granted, I, I want to thank both of you for working so hard on this. It's really great to see that nobody was rejected, and everyone got a piece of the pie, so well done.
Go ahead, councillor Edavitas.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, well done here, and I'm happy to see diverse groups here, not just baseball and soccer, but there's a little bit of everything, and I encourage more people out there who need grants, funding to apply early, and we'd like to see it as diverse as possible.
Thank you. Councillor Decker, your hand was up.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to echo the sentiments of councillor O'Hare and Edavitas as well. I know that both Jacob and Brooke, you know, did a wonderful job in initiating the grants. And, you know, it takes a lot of time to look through them and recognize those that need the help. So thank you to both of them and the rest of the staff.
Thank you. Go ahead, councillor Sentence.
Same thing. I just want to thank you for, for this. You guys are always there when I need you for a call, and you always answer, and I appreciate you doing this, so thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Go ahead, councillors.
Yeah, I'll add my thanks also. It's, it's great to see that there's a diversity of who's applying for these. Some are in kind, some are cash, and then some are just waiver. So it's good that we could support our local groups, because they do a lot of good stuff in our community. You know, the, and again, just for the general public, you know, you've got the Thoral Horicultural Society here, the Thoral Reed Band that gives us great performances, you know, the Knights of Columbus, Runway of Recognition, baseball, soccer, One Thoral, Thoral Legion Conservation Group, the Ontario Parasport Games, Hart Niagara, Niagara Children's Water Festival, the skating club, and the Thoral BIA. So it's a wide range, and I'm glad people are applying for these funds. And, you know, we're just slightly over budget, which isn't too bad, considering everyone's looking for money to produce or to have events. So this, this is great for our community, and like others said, if there's others that are looking for it, please apply for it next year, because you just make our community better. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Deange. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And Jacob and Brooke, you got off easy today. Okay. Twelve-six, PWCS seventeen, twenty-twenty-five, Traffic Calming Uppers Lane. Can I get a mover and a seconder for this, please? I've got councillor O'Hare and councillor Decker. And the report's there. And is there any questions to staff regarding this report? Go ahead, councillor Hanley. Go ahead, councillor Hanley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, in regards to the report, can I ask staff, is, is this the beginning of more traffic studies to be done in the area, in the Rolling Metals area, just not Uppers Lane? Because I know Sunset, Barker, a lot of the other streets, just, if staff could comment, are we looking?
Sean, do you want to answer that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We're not aware of any more that need to come down that road. We've had a few requests for traffic calming in different areas, but they didn't meet the criteria of the eighty-fifth percentile being more than ten kilometers over the speed limit. But I'm not aware of any others that are coming for Sunset and so forth.
Okay, I, I just brought it up, because I did have several comments from residents in the area, and I could forward them to you, that they sent to me in regards to four-way stops in Sunset and Barker, Parkway were three of the areas. Thank you.
Councillor Hanley, you'll, you'll send that to Sean?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, thanks for the report.
Anyone else? Okay. We had a mover and a seconder. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. PWCS eighteen, twenty-twenty-five, Drinking Water Quality Management System. DWQMS twenty-twenty-four, Annual Summary Report. Can I get a mover and a seconder? I got councillor Sentence and councillor Edavitas. Go ahead, the report's there. Anyone that wants to just ask any questions or discuss anything, go ahead, councillor O'Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Jeff. I was hoping Corey'd be here tonight, because time and time again, when this report comes to council, we get such good reports, such consistent, fine work. And I just want to point that out. I, I think there was one report with a very small issue, but I'm talking since council began this term, we keep scoring these wonderful results. So just keep up the good work. Water is so important to everybody. They're doing a great job. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Anyone else? I can mention two things, and they're, and they're important, because they both deliver water to the City of Thoral. But you see all the work going on at the DQ Water Treatment Plant, and it's a huge project that's been done in different phases. And then you're going to see the next big project in Merritt Island, the, the water treatment plant there, which, if I'm not mistaken, feeds Port Robinson West. So you're, you're seeing upgrades in water facilities that are servicing our city, which is good to see. So... Anyone else? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. We've got one notice. Is there any notices or motions? Okay, I got a notice, I have a motion from the last meeting, inclusion of kennels as a permitted use under zoning bylaw... a permitted use under zoning bylaw number 60, 2019, and I'll call on councillor Hanley for his motion respecting the inclusion of kennels as a permitted use under zoning bylaw number 60, 2019. Is there a secondary for that? Councillor sentence is the secondary. Okay, councillor Hanley, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, whereas the City of Thorold Zoning Bylaw number 60-2019 defines a kennel, whereas the City of Thorold Zoning Bylaw states, if a use is not specifically listed as a permitted use in a zone, then it is not permitted, and whereas the City of Thorold Zoning Bylaw does not list kennel as a permitted use in any of the established zones, and whereas it is recognized, proposed amendments to zoning bylaws require thorough review by staff with potential options, as well as compliance with relevant legislation, now therefore be resolved if the corporation, the City of Thorold, acts as follows, that staff be directed to review and report back to council with recommendations respecting the inclusion of kennels as a permitted use under zoning bylaw number 60, 2019. And I'll just give a comment, Mr. Mayor, I found this out when I was doing some investigating or trying to do some research, and I appreciate Maria getting back to me and clarifying about how the DC charges work and whatnot, but it was at that time I found out that in no zones in the City of Thorold during the 2019 comprehensive zoning bylaw review, were kennels added or a part of, so this is just to make them a part of, as we know, we're one of the fastest-growing communities, and I know that there's an interest in kennel expansion in the City of Thorold, and possible a new kennel in the future, and we need to recognize it and have its specific zones where they can operate, so I appreciate the support from council in regards to this, thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Hanley, is there anyone else that wants to speak to this motion? We had a mover and a secondary, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, so we're going to move now to closed session, and before I ask for a mover and a secondary to go into closed session, I would like to remind you of your obligations respecting closed session. Those who are participating electronically in the closed session must ensure that no other person is in the location from which they are taking part in the meeting, or make appropriate arrangements, so that any other persons cannot see or hear any of the confidential deliberations taking place. If this is not possible, you must withdraw from the meeting until it is reconvened in open session. Council staff and everyone present during the closed session have an obligation to ensure that what is discussed in closed session is kept confidential, and... Have we got them all? I can't see this. Yeah, go ahead. I'll let the clerk read it.
Okay, through you, Mr. Mayor, that council do not move into closed session to receive confidential information respecting, number one, a matter respecting personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees under section 239.2B of the Municipal Act 2001, that's for applications to fill vacant positions on committees of council. And item number two, a matter respecting a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board, under section 239.2K of the Municipal Act 2001, Kiefer Mansion listing.
Okay, can I get a mover and a secondary to go into closed session? Councillor Decker and councillor Edavitas, this is the mover and secondary to move into closed session, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, so we will take a five-minute break before we go into closed session, so that...